Reading.
There you go.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Wayne's Port City Council meeting. It is Thursday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, seven oh two P M. For the record, we are meeting remotely tonight due to inclement weather conditions. I hope everybody is safe and 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 sound. Um, for everybody that's here and for everybody that's listening in. Um, I'm going to announce here quickly that we did have a brief executive session regarding matters of litigation. For the record. Um. For the record, we also have five members of council in attendance, myself, Adam Yoder, Eric Byder, Vincenzo, Lizzy, Bonnie Katz, uh, Liz Mealy. So we do have a quorum tonight. Uh, we'll move to item three, approval of city council meeting minutes dated November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. These are the minutes for budget work session number one. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Are there any comments or questions related to the minutes? Hearing and seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Biden.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Item four, limited courtesy to the floor. We have had no requests tonight that I'm aware of. Mrs. Frank, did you get into here? Um, before the meeting started?
No, I didn't.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Um, like I said, we're 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 going to bounce around a couple of items here quickly. We'll move to item eight, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution releasing the city of Williamsport upper funds to the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Motion a second. Um, so this is a resolution, just simply um, releasing the funds that we've allocated in our rescue plan funding budget to the water authority. We allocated these funds back in February, March, when we initially put this budget together. Um, I think the water authority has done work that they intended to use this money for at this point. And so this is simply um, releasing the funds um, from here, you know, the administration can simply just transfer, go through that process to get them the money. Um. This was reviewed in Public Works, Bonnie. I apologize. I was not able to make it. Um, so I'll but I'll turn it over to you to um. Speak to the conversation in Public Works.
Uh, we did have a discussion and as we, as you stated, Adam, the uh, it was we did appropriate these funds uh, way back when and uh, uh, there was no, no, no more discussion on it because this is much needed. We're hoping that they'll be able to get more funding as um, from other areas at this point because of everything that they're doing, it's going to take a lot of money to accomplish what they need to get done. And other than that, that's about it.
Yeah, here, here. I I would agree. Um. Any other comments or questions from other members of council on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Biden.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Bonnie, you're muted.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Uh, Mike, Eric, you both want here. Thank you very much for all you do and thanks for your patience um, and getting this funding and uh, have a wonderful, happy holiday and a good new year. All right, we'll move to item. Oh, yeah, sorry, guys. Thank you. Um, we'll move to item seventeen, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution accepting contract with first due for software for the fire department.
Uh, did the resolution change? Or did the agenda change? I have item seventeen as the insurance policy.
Oh, I have that as eighteen.
Okay, uh, let's do the insurance policy one then.
Resolution for various insurance needs for policy year oh, one, oh, one, two, three through oh, one, oh, one, two, four.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Uh, Molly, you're up. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, so this is a resolution to um, extend the uh, the city's liability and workers' compensation and cyber liability insurance to the next year. So we would have a property and liability package of three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Umbrella access liability insurance and the amount of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eight thousand cyber liability insurance and the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and six thousand workers' compensation insurance and the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars. Um, on the line, we have Kevin Frank from Gallagher Insurance who took um, a lot of time to put this package together for us tonight.
Thank you, uh, Molly. Uh, this was reading finance, Liz.
This item wasn't finding. And we had some discussion, the city obviously saw a substantial reduction in the cost of our insurance policy um, this year, but uh, per per Kevin, we would have seen an increase in line with the insurance market in general, had it not been for the removal of uh, several pieces of property um, and a a large chunk of our workers' comp um, related to the separation of R B T. Um, so we saw about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar reduction, although Kevin, I apologize, I didn't quite catch there at the beginning. Um, did we succeed in obtaining cybersecurity? Insurance?
This is Molly. Yes, we did. We got that policy in today.
Okay.
Sixteen thousand, five oh six.
Okay, and we were at twelve last year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so um, so yeah, so so um, I guess we succeeded in saving about a hundred and forty-three thousand in total this year. Um, and while that that may or may not, our insurance costs will be likely to remain similar in the coming, you know, in the coming years with with increases because we won't be adding R B T back in, but it's important to note that um, what would initially appear to be a substantial savings over last year is in fact um, a minor increase instead. But uh, but I don't think that finance had any doubts about our coverage. Uh, Kevin was resolving the cybersecurity question on Tuesday. I'm glad to see it's been resolved. Um, and uh, with that uh, said, I think I think that um, I will leave it to other members of the finance committee, I believe in the space that was only Eric. Um, if you recollect any other points of discussion that I am, that I am not currently bringing to mind.
All right, thanks, Liz. Um, Molly, uh, what was the, what was the number for the cyber again?
Sixteen thousand, five hundred and six.
Okay, um, so we need to amend the resolution to um, incorporate that um, in into the um, into the coverage. Um, so I'll 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 make a motion to amend the resolution to include um, cybersecurity insurance for a value of sixteen thousand, five hundred and six dollars. Is there a second to that motion, motion to amend? Motion in a second. Any comments or questions related to that? Um, amended, amended, proposed amendment, excuse me.
Um, my curiosity is with the cyber insurance, what exactly is that covering? What are we um? Does it cover the city as a whole? Does it cover just the police department? You know, what what is it? Is it ransomware software? So what is that that we're benefiting from spending the extra sixteen thousand uh, dollars?
I'll I'll defer to um, Kevin, think on that, and I'll send you the, I'll send out uh, the proposal to all of council then.
Thank you.
Yeah, the the benefit this year is not quite as good as it was in the past. Uh, but what you have are various different cybersecurity uh, protections, privacy and security, if either private health information or personally identifying information that's in your care is released. You have coverage for your liability for that. You have a new sub limit on there for cyber extortion or ransomware that used to be included at the full policy limit that has been reduced to two hundred and fifty thousand due to the current state of the city's cybersecurity controls. Uh, there's, is it, there's third party and first party coverage. Uh, you take credit card payments, uh, the P C I liabilities built into that. Multimedia, media on your website or other uh, infringements. And then for first party, like I said, most of that would either be ransomware or other uh, damage to your data due to a security or cyber breach.
Uh, Mr. Frank, I don't know if you're going to be able to answer this question or not. Uh, this is also a question for Mr. Black. Does this uh, require us to do any work uh, or any more work on the I T side to get into any kind of compliance for the insurance?
Uh, yes, it does. As a matter of fact, this quote itself is uh, has certain subjectivities. Uh, let me get let me find it real quick. I apologize. It's the one thing I do not have uh, right in front of me. But let's see, where are the subjectivities? We're going to need uh, your I T people to give us a range or approximate number of unique records that you collect, store, post, or process uh, you know, controls, use, or shares that contain, you know, private or sensitive information in paper or electronic form. And we're going to need confirmation of your endpoint detection response provider, you know, whether that carbon black cow uh, cloud, crowd strike, uh, Falcon Endpoint Protection, Bit Defender, Sentinel One, Windows Defender, but what kind of endpoint detection? Uh, you know, response do you have in place for Williamsport? And then they want a freshly signed application attesting to those factors.
And will this coverage commence prior to getting all of that? Um, so we're, we have elapsed?
It will not. We'll need that prior to January first.
Okay, uh, that uh, that is up to you then, Mr. Black. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions related to the amendment? With the proposed amendment? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion to amend, please.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Biden.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes, Janice.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to amend passes five zero. We're back at the main motion. Any other comments or questions related to the uh, live in front of us?
It's, I think, Adam, we should ask Chris. Chris, are you going to be able to get this accomplished?
No, this will not be accomplished by January first because there's items in this current budget that I am needing to perform most of these tasks.
Can I ask a quick question? Does the city not have any sort of endpoint detection and response provider that it utilizes?
We do have some endpoint protection, but not to the limits that I'd like to see. We do not have multi-factor authentication. I understand. Endpoint protection in place.
You know, they do understand you do not have M F A. Uh, what they do want to know is, you know, what is the endpoint detection and response provider?
Okay, I can provide that to you tomorrow.
Okay. Then I would mean to do it. Yeah, and I say, I apologize. This is one of those things where the goalposts keep moving around. You know, by the day almost. That's just the market that we're in with this right now.
Well, yes, I could provide that information to you tomorrow when I get back to the office.
Very good.
It sounds like, uh, Chris, you'll be working with Kevin and uh, uh, then to get this accomplished as soon as possible then, right, Chris?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing and seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please, on the main motion, excuse me.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Biden.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, main motion passes five zero. Um, Ja- Janice, I got the, I got the chains on the agenda. Um, just correct me if I'm getting my numbers mixed up. Um, when we get to that point, okay? Um, okay, I think that takes care of all of our um, all of our guests um, that are coming from external um, of the of the city or or vendors, et cetera. So we'll kind of go back in order here. So um, we'll go back up to item five, Mrs. Frank.
Ordinance of the city of Williamsport adopting various operating budgets for the city of Williamsport, including the general fund, capital projects fund, city hall operating fund, liquid fuels fund, debt service fund, act thirteen fund, and pool repair fund, and this is final reading.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. All right, so we are in second reading of our ordinance um, approving the twenty-twenty-three budget, the general fund, the various other budgets, et cetera. Um, so um, we made a handful of changes last week. Um, there are a couple of changes uh, that that I would, I'll throw out to start out this week. Um, that came from from Tracy and the administration in relation to the um, the change that we made in the capital projects budget with the Bearcat and then the increase in the public works budget. Um, Tracy, I apologize. I meant to call you today, but uh, it's it's been a bit of a day um, with with the with the weather um that we that we have uh, in in front of us here. So I I got your note and I appreciate you outlining the changes. Um, and just to make sure that I'm not missing anything, um. So we want to um, reduce the transfers in from the general fund and the capital projects fund by two ninety-four, five. Um, reduce transfers out to capital projects fund in the general fund by two ninety-four, five hundred, and then the capital projects fund, capital purchases, police, reduce that by three ten. Correct?
Correct. That's in effect uh, the way the flow would need to work to implement what uh, Councilman Byder introduced last week.
Okay, um, could you help me out with uh, page numbers on the, I'll 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 make those motions here. Um, I I know where I'm at on capital projects, but um, do you mind giving me the page number on um, the general fund that you're referring to, just to make sure I get the right one?
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
One. Sorry, it may take me a moment because there's a lot of pages.
No worries. No worries. And and again, my apologies. It's it's been a day.
So the transfer out of the general fund on page number thirty-two. The line item is transfer to capital projects.
Yep, gotcha. Okay.
That needs to be reduced.
Okay. So I make a motion to reduce the transfer to capital projects line item um, by two hundred ninety-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions uh, related to this?
I just want to reiterate what we all said last week and um, something that uh, you know, we all believe. This is something that I think there is benefit to the community because of the events and um, influx of population that we have during Little League and so on. Um, but considering that this is used by ten counties uh, for various reasons, and the cert team is multiple um, municipalities uh, participating. Uh, we need to look at resources uh, for that. We need to look at them to uh, help pay for this resource.
You're you're slightly incorrect with the ten counties. That's, I tried to explain it last week. I know it's a little difficult to understand it. The ten counties response is a terrorism task force. That's for that alone. That's not for operations. So we only respond to those ten counties in the event of a of a terrorist act of some kind of 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 terrorist act. So I was trying to differentiate between that and what our actual operating uh, tactics are here with the cert team itself. So it's not fair to say, go ask ten other counties for that. That's what we're in the net, that's what we're in that task force for. So we already get funded for them. But unfortunately, the funding that they provide to all ten counties is for all first responders and and it's not enough to cover a a Bearcat. So I just want to make sure we understand that. So with the events being said, that has nothing to do with the ten counties thing. That's a totally separate thing other than the operations of what the cert team does. So to go ask them for funding, that's not, we already get funding from the the task force itself. That would be the terrorism task force. That's a totally different uh, response and operation than what we do. So for our our main function, we don't do that in the ten counties. So hostage rescue, um, barricaded gunman, high-risk search warrants, and those things, that's our primary function. The ten county thing with the terrorism task force, that's a response entity to ten counties in the event of a terrorist attack. So I just want to make sure we understand it.
I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions related to the motion to amend? Okay, hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the um, motion to amend.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Biden.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to amend passes five zero. Let me try to pull up my capital projects fund here.
Page thirty-four.
Okay. So we are talking about reducing. All right, so uh, I'm going to make a second uh, motion to amend. I'm going to mo- um, motion to amend. Um, the transfer from general fund line item, reduce that um, by two hundred ninety-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions or comments related to that motion to amend? Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Franklin, the motion to amend.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Biden.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to amend passes five to zero. Um, Tracy, just to clarify, I think we'd also want to reduce the um, police capital projects purchases by two ninety-four, five, right? Because we left fifteen in there for that, for that Bearcat.
No, it would be three, ten, the fifteen, five that was, that remained in there was the current year of funding.
Oh, thank you very much.
Yeah, the three, ten was the actual purchase of it coming.
Gotcha. Wow. Gotcha. Thank you very much. Okay. Um, I will then make one more motion to amend the capital purchase police um, line item under project projected expenditures on the capital projects fund and reduce that by three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions related to um, that motion to amend?
Just to clarify here real quick, we are on page thirty-five.
Thirty-four.
Uh, I'm sorry, yes, thirty-four, capital purchases, police, reducing from five sixty down to what would be essentially two fifty.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the third motion to amend.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Biden.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to amend passes five to zero. Um, so those were the initial procedural um, changes that I had. Um, and and again, Tracy, thank you for summarizing that for me. That was extremely helpful. Um, and uh, I'll I'll open the floor for for others. If there's any others um, out there that any members of council would like to see.
Adam.
Yes, Bonnie.
Okay, um, I brought up the fact of phrasing um, Gary Norris salary by ten thousand dollars and uh, the administration was going to um, I guess, discuss among themselves what they were planning on doing.
Yeah, y- yes, that is correct. I believe the administration was comfortable um, with a two to three percent increase in addition to what they had already factored into the budget, Mayor Slaughter. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, so Bonnie, um, and and this is open for um, debate amongst the the five of us. Um, if 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 we were um, if if we were comfortable with with that level of a middle ground, um, three percent would increase the salary that is budgeted for Gary to, by my math, sixty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars.
I think that's not enough for all the work that he's he's been doing and will be doing uh, until um, codes is up to snuff, and we have a a director in codes. Um, I don't see what the problem is. He's doing uh, two departments at this point, taking care of two departments. I mean, you're talking planning, zoning, and codes. Um, yes, they overlap one another in in certain areas, but it's still a lot more work that's put on this man's shoulders. I mean, there have been other um uh, directors that have gotten thirteen thousand dollars in raises, fifteen dollar, thousand dollars in raises this past year. I don't see what the problem is with somebody who is taking on more work and doing uh, really a good job as far as keeping this department um up to snuff. So to me, I think a ten, ten thousand dollar raise is not uh, out of the question from the standpoint of what what is being done.
Thank you, Bonnie. Um, Ma- Mayor Slaughter, not to put you on the spot, but I mean, maybe uh, maybe it would be helpful to understand uh, the administration's thought process on on the proposal um, that that you had offered us earlier in the week. Uh, that might be helpful to maybe understand, um, you know, where you're coming from, if you, if if you don't mind.
Sure, um.
Thank you very much.
Sure, absolutely. So I think the two to three percent on top of the three percent that was proposed, uh, given that he is uh, you know, as as Councilwoman Kat said, uh, overseeing uh, the day-to-day operations of uh, the codes department now as far as that, um, we have uh, Barry Iset that uh, is also working on all of the uh, other items uh, that require those certifications uh, in which uh, Joe Girardi had uh, that we lost uh, with his departure. Uh, we also had a two percent uh, from Mr. Nar from June of twenty of this year to now. Uh, and so uh, in our opinion, uh, moving forward, this, we felt this was uh, an appropriate recommendation uh, for the salary uh, moving forward. And it's not to 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 clarify, this is sort of uh, technical, but I know sometimes we we bring up directors, but this is not a a directorship uh, per the current administrative code, so just slightly different.
Gotcha. Um, Mayor Slaughter, I appreciate the 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 insight. It's a little bit helpful to, I think, understand where you're coming from. Um.
So A- Adam, if I can just clarify the numbers here quick?
Yes, please, by all means.
So it it seems as though, um, just to be clear, Gary's receiving the, the Mr. Nar is receiving the three percent increase um, received across the board by by all employees this uh, this this year, and then an additional five percent increase within the course between what we're cut, what would be receiving, what we're uh, an additional five percent increase within the course of the past year and then what we're contemplating now. Um, give or take, I'm assuming the percentages might be slightly different, given they're all being calculated off of the 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 changed income. But um, but that's, that's, so a five percent increase is approximately what the, what the administration is is proposing. Um, and I believe that Mrs. Katz's um, proposal would would put us more in line with something. proposal would, would put us more in line with something along a total increase of about eighteen percent. Two percent followed by about sixteen percent currently.
Yes, I believe that was somewhere in the eighteen, nineteen percent range. I believe that's right, Councilwoman.
Yeah. So, yeah, sorry, I'm not, I'm not actually working with a calculator, so doing particularly precise calculations is not going to be my bag right now. But, 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 yeah, so I, so I think we're, there's, there's a difference there of, of about fourteen percent. And, and I'm not, I'm, I'm I'm not weighing in particularly strongly on this. I think, I think the higher number might be a little high simply for the additional responsibilities within the office. And the lower number perhaps a little low, in my opinion, but I, I would certainly like to hear what other members of council think and, and the administration.
If, if I may interject, my concern is when we do find somebody to fill that position, it makes it much more difficult than to justify that higher number. I do hope that the plan is from the administration that they're going to go out and continue to look for somebody to fill that position. So I would have a hard time justifying that higher number as well. Until that happens, we do have to recognize that Mr. Nar has done a very good job of doing that role with those added responsibilities in the meantime. And we also have to recognize that he will probably have to continue to do so even after we bring somebody on board so they can understand city operations.
There's, thank you for that, Mr. Biden. Mayor Slaughter, remind me, I'm looking again at the, the salary detail. I don't see anything budgeted for the building official line item in, in twenty twenty-three. Refresh me, please, on the, I think the, the process moving forward, what your plan is with that role, timing, et cetera, if you would, please.
Sure. When we brought Barry Iset on, I think that, at least it appeared to me, the conversation was to see how that was going with Barry Iset for a while, to see if we liked that relationship with them between working with the city and the additional responsibilities they were handling. And so at the moment, I think that relationship appears to be going very well. You know, the plans and everything are getting processed and out the door relatively quickly. And so I think we just wanted to give that a little bit of time to see if that was a situation where we wanted to keep it in place for a little bit. Or do we want to amend? We had another conversation about amending administrative code for the residency requirement for these positions. And so in interim here, you know, I think we want to give a little bit of time to see how very I set was working out, but I don't disagree that we could amend the administrative code for the residency, which was what got us, you know, a little more difficulty when we were looking for public works and other positions and moving forward. And then we can put a salary in there. Or if we, if we think the relationship is going well and it's saving us a little bit of money, we could continue moving forward with Barry Iset. So that was the initial conversation, I think, when we brought that contract forward.
Gotcha. Okay, so please correct me if I'm misinterpreting this. The way I'm interpreting that is, I, I think we're still kind of determining the path that we want to take. We, we have this relationship with Barry Iset. So far, it's going okay, at least to good. But we're not quite at the point where we're like, we, we're willing to continue down the path on a permanent basis. Is that, is that a fair interpretation?
Yeah, I think so. I think, you know, the way I was seeing it anyways, let's, let's take a look at it in twenty twenty-three. Let's see how, how it goes. Since we sort of just started at, you know, end of July and that's going well and give us a year or so. And then we can review it at that time. And if we want to, you know, make changes at that point, but I think it's, it's not easy. I think the, you know, getting someone with all of those certifications is not going to be a, you know, it's going to be a large undertaking. I'm happy to, you know, go down that road, but right now with there I said, they clearly have the capacity. They have a, you know, a large company. And so that was the way I was thinking about it. Let's, let's see how it's working out. Give it a little bit of time and then do another assessment and bring that before council with the, how it's going.
Okay. No, I, I appreciate that. So let me kind of circle back to Ms. Mealy's point and question here. And Liz, please tell me if I don't answer, I guess, your, your, your request for feedback from other members. So I, I probably, I mean, I, I would, I would gladly vote for a three percent raise for Gary right now. I would like to see more. And I say that because I think my, my gut tells me that the scope of work that he has taken on is, is still greater than than, 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 than three percent, right? And so, but Ms. Mealy, to your point, I, I understand the other side of where you're coming from. Here's, here's an idea that just kind of came into my head and and, and frankly, if this was thrown out before, I missed it. So just tell me. You know, maybe, maybe we could, maybe we could do something a little bit more than three percent. Maybe it's five or six. It's not the, you know, the, the double-digit percentage that we were hoping or had discussed last week. And then if, if we're going to continue down this road of Gary being the head of the bureau, right? When we make that determination later in twenty twenty-three, if that's the route we continue to go, I would like us to revisit that at that point and maybe we make that salary reflect what the final decision is at that point. So I don't know if that answers your question, Liz. It, it kind of does, but I think it's just another idea as well.
I, I, I think that was actually a larger point, like mine, Adam, that, 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 that I wouldn't feel comfortable with a higher number, but we definitely contemplate something in the middle. So, so I, if, if that's something that makes everyone else more comfortable, then I think that would be fine. To, to Eric's point, right, you know, I, it's a, it's a pretty rare occurrence to, to give someone increased pay for increased duties, reduce the duties and reduce the pay. So I think we do need to be very careful on that.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Well, maybe.
Sorry, I'll say it. I couldn't help it, Liz, I'm sorry.
Now we gotta go after the computer.
Yeah, well, no, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that it's my wifi and I'm not sure. I don't have much cell service up here either, so I don't know if I can make it any better, but does that help?
A little bit. A little bit.
Yeah, sorry. All right. Well, I'll just keep my mouth shut. That'll make everybody. Anyway, I, I, I agree with you, Adam.
So, well.
What if, Adam, what if I suggested we go five percent right now? How would that be with, with the rest of council and also the administration?
I would, I would support that.
As would I.
I see Derek Nottingham said, I'm, I don't know if that, is that a response to that or is it something else? Sorry.
Yes, that's fine. I mean, obviously I don't have really a say and, you know, I have a say, but not a vote clearly. But yeah, five percent is.
We just don't want to lose a good worker being burned out. I think that's where I'm coming from. I think we all realize when you're doing so many different positions, it can be a mental and physical strain. And, you know, at, at least if, if you're acknowledged for what you're doing and saying that you're well appreciated, and sometimes we have to do it monetarily. That's the reason why I'm doing this, because it is. I mean, we all know when we're put in, in positions where we're doing a multitude of jobs, it starts to wear and tear on your body and mind.
Texted me, his computer just, here he comes. Okay, we're good. As I say, we, we need him if we're gonna change it, so.
That's right, we need five.
Yeah. So by my math,
Where did that go? Because I don't have a calculator.
Yeah, I'm doing it right now. So by my math, if we would do five percent, that would route, that would sixty-four thousand nine hundred.
Okay.
Vince, wow, he's connected to the audio. Liz, any, any thoughts from that, on that proposal?
Okay, can you hear me better like this?
Oh, my goodness, yes.
It was something to do with my headset, but I'm not sure what. Sorry, guys. The operation of it's a little opaque. So now we're just on the phone. Yeah, I, 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 I am, I am comfortable with that number. And I think that sounds more in line with this, with the, with this, the, the increase that I feel comfortable with. So, sounds good, guys.
Give me one second. Okay, I'm, I'm doing this the wrong way. Alright, so that will be an increase of three thousand ninety-two dollars. So Vince, I don't, I don't know when you fell off. We were just kind of still continuing the discussion on Gary's salary, I think, between the administration and the rest of us on council. I think we've come to a comfort level of five percent for Gary. I see not his head, so I think he's.
Yeah, I can, I'm, I'm here. I can hear you. I apologize.
No worries.
Went completely blank, so I'm actually logged in on my cellphone now. You know, the, the one thing that I, and forgive me for jumping in here, and I don't need to put anyone on the spot. You know, obviously, we know that Mr. Nar has been picking up quite a bit of slack, doing an awful lot more work. You know, as such, you know, we want to make sure that Mr. Nar's pay is commensurate with the, with the work that he's doing. And to the mayor's point, you know, they're looking to potentially, or they're still looking to hire. But I just, I'd like to ask, has anyone spoken to Mr. Nar personally to get kind of some feedback on how he feels with the workload that's being placed upon him and kind of where his salary position is in relation to that?
I did talk to Gary after last week's meeting. He loves his job. He loves what he's doing. So it's, it's no problem whatsoever. He's, he was happy to feel that he was at least respected for what he is doing.
Yeah, thank you, Bonnie. I appreciate hearing that. That I've worked with Mr. Nar several times and he is very, very good at his job. So, you know, I just want to make sure that we are taking care of Mr. Nar as well as he takes care of us. So if, if the, the council has come to the decision that, that the five percent is adequate right now. And then to your point, Adam, that we, I'm guessing this is what was confirmed while I was dropped off, that we're going to revisit this here in a predetermined time period to come back and reassess Mr. Nar's roles and responsibilities to make sure that they're in line with his, with his pay. Is that, is that correct?
I, I, as one of seven, I would personally like to see that. And I just say that because if, if we're gonna ask Gary to be managing more people and, and dealing with that scope of work on a permanent basis, I do think it's appropriate to revisit it because I think that changes the, the role. But, you know, I'm, I'm only, I can only speak for myself. So.
Okay, thank you. And to that, I will definitely agree with you. That, you know, for the, the, the simple time being right now is that I can get behind the five percent, of course, and then, you know, we revisit this to make sure that Mr. Nar is again, that his pay is commensurate with the workload that he's handling.
If, if I can make a suggestion as well, gentlemen?
Certainly.
It would strike me that then in the meantime, as we're busy evaluating exactly what, what this role looks like in the codes department and exactly how we're handling, you know, our codes department in terms of outsourcing some to Barry Iset and, and keeping some of our, our codes operations at house and zoning operations in house. It would probably be wise for us to look at a salary range on a statewide level. So that when we're discussing, you know, and, and at some point, we should clearly look at that for, for, for city positions in general. We, we know that we may not be able to meet what, what people can make, certainly in much larger cities around, around the Commonwealth. But it would be wise for us to understand, I think, where we fall within those ranges on, on a number of positions in the city. Okay, so that's something I think that perhaps we should consider for the coming year across the board.
Yeah, and, sorry.
No, go there. That was, that was all I had to say.
Yeah, to that point, exactly. We, we've started that and I've actually started reaching out. Few cities have done wage studies, so I'm starting to get recommendations from companies they use and maybe put out an RFP if council thinks that's prudent in twenty twenty-three to start to look at a wage study across the board for our employees. So that's all I'm gonna say.
President Yoder, may I clarify something?
Yes, please.
So the calculation that I've done, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, you did five percent on top of the three percent? Is that, was that your intention?
So, under the salary detail, his proposed salary is sixty-one thousand and I, I, I left the page. So I was doing five percent on top of that salary.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I just wanted everybody to be clear because I wasn't clear at first. I thought you were saying five percent total. I didn't realize you were saying over eight percent total.
Yes, yeah, I think that they were eight percent total, I believe, Tracy.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. That wasn't what I was hearing.
Any other comments or questions? Bonnie, do you want to formally make that motion or do you need, do you need me to?
I would like to make a motion to increase the salary line item, which I think the number is twenty-two fifty. Am I correct in that? To a total of, Adam, this is where, should we say five percent or because the three percent has already been done? So make an amendment to increase his salary by five percent.
Hang on. I had the number.
I know, I've written down and I, with all my numbers, I can't find it.
I had the number and then I went to a different page.
It's an additional three thousand ninety-two dollars that would be added to salaries.
Thank you, Tracy.
Certainly.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further comments or questions on this item or that, that motion to amend? Okay, hearing seen on Mrs. Franklin, the motion to amend.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Biden.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to amend passes five to zero. Thanks, everyone, for the, for the discussion. The administration, Mayor Slaughter, thank you for consideration and collaborating with us on that as well. We appreciate it. We'll very much look forward to seeing where this department goes. And Gary, I don't know if you're out there, but thanks for all you do. We, we appreciate you, the work you're doing. All right. I'll yield the floor to others. Are there other amendments or adjustments that others would like to discuss? Propose, et cetera?
There is one that I would like to propose.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion for multiple line items within the budget, all associated with rent. We have the opportunity before us to put ourselves in a position where we can pay significantly less as a city by leasing from the county versus leasing from RVTA. Considering all that's going on between the city and RVTA as we continue to untangle ourselves from them. I think it's prudent for us to not rent from them as well and considering the savings. I think it's prudent for us to not rent from them as well, and considering the savings. Um, so, should I do this one item at a time, or should I do it as a bulk item? It should probably be a bulk item here, so.
Um, if, if you're, if you want to reduce the, the, the rent line items by some variable, I, I would say you make, you can make one, one amendment, one motion to amend. And, and I would, I would try to read each individual line item and by how much you want to reduce each line item.
All right, let's do that, then. So, the departments would be city council. I'd like to make a motion that we reduce that, uh, by $190. Um, the city clerk, we'd reduce that by $2,639. The mayor's, uh, rent line, we would reduce that by $1,256. The budget and fiscal officer would reduce that by $1,249. The controller by $1,526. The tax collector, we would reduce that by $1,576. Human resources, we would reduce that by $432. Public safety, um, we reduce that by $12,054. Codes department, we were reduced by $1,050. Planning and economic development, we would reduce by $1,268. And information technology, we'd reduce by $735. For a total reduction of $23,975.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bider. Is there a second to that motion? I'll second it. Um, so, Mr. Bider, walk us through, um, walk us through the rationale, um, on the, on, on, on your approach to the, to the amendment.
So what I'm looking at, um, trying to be, um, sensitive of time, um, I'm not asking that city departments pack up and leave on January 1st, or February 1st, or even within the first half of the year. I'm asking that we do a, do our due diligence, make sure we get a proper floor plan done of the space needed and the space that's offered to us by, um, like coming counting. And we, this is being reduced, so that way the move would be done in the fourth quarter. So city departments would have plenty of time to plan and make arrangements for that move sometime in October.
Got it, okay. So, the, the reductions essentially reflect going to a different rent structure in the, at the back end of the year.
That's correct. By the fourth quarter, so the, the first three quarters of the year, um, things would stay pretty much status quo with the intention of having everything ready to move, um, October 1.
Got it, okay. Um, tha- thank you for the clarification. Um, so we have a motion and a second to amend, um, a handful of items. Um, any comments or questions from, from other members of council on the amendment, uh, the proposed amendment, excuse me, um, or, or, or members of the administration? Bonnie, you okay?
I'm okay, I'm fine. I need to go get a drink.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I, I have a, a couple of comments, Adam. I can't, if anyone else has something to say, I'm happy to go last. Okay. All right, um, I will be voting against this amendment. Um, I appreciate the, uh, the desires of, I believe it's several members of council to, uh, um, to save the city money on rent. Um, however, I, I disagreed with the administration's initial choice to move out of, um, old city hall, uh, somewhat quickly, and I don't feel as though continuing to sort of hop from one property to another, um, is, is going to be beneficial either to the city's employees or to city government and our, our cohesiveness as a, as a, um, in total. Um, I, I also, uh, continue to have some issues with the idea of, um, the city residing in the second story of an office building, just, just from a, the, the perspective of, of the, the appearance and the, in the impression of city government, I feel as though that is, that is detrimental to us, both from the inside and from, and from the outside looking in. Um, uh, so I, like I said, I, I appreciate the, the, the thought that goes into this, and I, um, would certainly, as the administration contemplates, um, what to do about a, a more permanent home and a more permanent arrangement, um, for the city offices. Um, a- as we contemplate that next year, I would, I would appreciate the administration taking, um, the counties, uh, offered space into consideration. Uh, but that said, I, I, um, I wouldn't support reducing the rent, because I don't, I, I once again just don't feel that it's prudent for us to make another move, uh, so quickly, um, without, without really fully analyzing, uh, what we'd like to do. And, and, and frankly, as members of council who, who don't have permanent offices within, um, city hall, uh, it strikes me that this is one item in which we perhaps have less of a say than the members of the administration who do reside there full-time. Um, uh, but, uh, but thanks, guys.
No, thank, thank you, Liz. I understand where you're coming from, certainly. Um, I don't, I, 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 I don't know that there is really any good answer that probably any of us 100% agree on, un- unfortunately. Um, and, you know, I think that's probably will be in the case with this issue, probably since like the 50s and 60s, when, you know, all the people that came before us, um, you know, went through this iteration, probably close to half a dozen, if not a dozen times, leading up to this point, right? Um, you know, there's, there, there's, there's trade-offs, uh, but there, but there's benefits. Um, certainly understand where you're coming from, um, for, at least from my perspective, I, I think the, I think the benefits are, 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 are worth making the move to share services, um, to, to try to, um, streamline services and costs. I mean, you know, we, we've openly talked about, um, the, just the structural issues that we have, um, with, with our budget, right, uh, right, Liz? And, you know, it, it, I think it's things like this that are gonna help us through that and, and keep us afloat in the long run, so, um, you know, that, that makes it worth it to me, but you're certainly understand your points, and I, I appreciate you bringing them forward and, uh, and, and, uh, and getting them on the record nonetheless, so. Um, any other comments or questions, uh, related to this motion to amend?
I don't mind.
Uh, uh, hang on, uh, I, I heard, I heard the mayor, I saw Chris Black, and I heard Bonnie, um, uh, Ma- Mayor Slaughter, I'll gladly offer the floor to you for, you're the first person I heard, so.
Sure, I think that was Chris you heard. I didn't say anything, but, yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Um,
That's fine.
Chris, uh, i- if, if you have something to say, you're welcome to, but I will defer to Chris if, if I made that mistake, I apologize.
I do have something to say, but Chris can, right, Chris?
Uh, good evening, everyone. The question I have is what space in which building is, uh, is this being offered, and who's gonna do the reconstruction for blocking out the different offices and getting the infrastructure put in place for it?
So.
For nine months.
Uh, uh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, and you have that all done within nine months?
So I think, uh, I think the proposal, um, at least the, the initial conversations that, um, different members have had over, I don't, I don't know, I don't know when it was, or how long it's been, um, I believe it was the second floor of Third Street Plaza, it's open, right? Um, I think we would need to negotiate a lease agreement, right, the beginning part, um, to the mid part of the year, and then that negotiation, put a plan together. Um, and, and I think that, uh, you know, based on what we need, um, from my experience, um, you know, I think, I think the, I think we could work something out, um, where I, ideally, I think the owner of the building would, would work through that. I mean, I think that was kind of the deal that happened with, uh, when we moved over to Trade and Transit 1 and 2, for example, right? Um, I think we need to work through that, but I think we have time to work through that. I think Mr. Bider's amendment, you know, gives us ample time to, to, to do that, right?
If I can just make some observations from being a former employee there. I know the current maintenance crew is who does the construction and reconstruction in the different floors is months, if not years, behind in projects, because they just don't have the manpower to keep up with them. Um, to throw something like this on them as well, I really don't see them being able to handle it without taking away the services from the different magistrates' offices and the other departments that are in the middle of the move.
You're, you're probably more familiar with, with, with that backlog as a former county employee than I am, to be honest with you. So I think that's, you know, something we'd have to work through and negotiate when we, you know, work, work through a, a finalized lease, right? Um, so, and, and as a, as a customer, I think that we'd have to, you know, obviously take into consideration and think through that, so. Certainly. Uh, Bon, I'm sorry, Mayor Slaughter, you, you, you said you had something, and then I'll go to Ms. Katz, I'll go to you.
Sure, I, you know, to Chris's point, that was, that was one point I had, uh, seems a little rushed. I don't think we should hamstring ourselves if we don't, um, you know, if we don't have anything in place, I've not seen any, me personally, I've not seen anything from the commissioners that they've sent over, uh, related any type of initial, uh, you know, what they might be considering or looking at. I know there's at least one commissioner, at least at this point, that looks like, uh, he's probably not gonna run, so we could be turning over at least one commissioner, if not more. Uh, I don't know if you all have talked to any of them, our employees or not, maybe you have, maybe you haven't, um, you know, we were talking about employees with the last item. Uh, I think this would be, um, just a grenade to drop on them in the middle of everything else that's going on. I personally don't see the benefits out of this, just picking up and leaving, uh, when we're situated where we are currently, uh, and trying to get it figured out. I think that's, I talked about that a little bit last week. I think we continue to need to get our house in order. Uh, let's get, there's still variables hanging out there, let's get those in place. Uh, I'm not sure what services, at least I have not spoken to the commissioners about possible services that could be shared. Uh, they're in a very, uh, public battle right now amongst their own services, but I'm trying to share services with us. Uh, I think that would put into water there. Uh, and I'm not even sure from a legal perspective, I've not talked to Norm or Austin uh, about what may even be permitted to be shared, uh, what would make sense to be shared, uh, from, from that standpoint. Uh, so I think there's just so many variables, of course, I'm on board to look for, uh, at every option that could be on the table, um, that's out there. My concern is if we decrease this and come October 1st, we don't have something, what are we gonna do? Then, are we gonna be on the street? Are we gonna come back to the budget and say, okay, now we're gonna increase the rent back up? It just seems very rushed. We all have a, a ton of stuff on our plate to have to try and have this in place by September, uh, and moved out and have everything constructed. Uh, you know, I think we give ourselves time to negotiate across the board, not just with the commissioners, but other potential sites that might be out there. Uh, continue to get our financial house in order, and then go from there. I'm not sure we want to hamstring ourselves, though, uh, to say, hey, come October 1, we're out of rent money, uh, and not sure what we're gonna do now. Uh, I think my humble opinion, we keep the rent in there, we continue to work through this, talk to the commissioners, see what the formal offer would be, negotiate that with them or anyone else that might be out there, uh, and then go from there, looking across the board at what would be permitted, what might even be feasible logistically for them, what Chris just said, which I wasn't aware of that, but of course, he's a former county employee. Uh, as you said, Councilman Yoder, he would know that more than us, uh, and see, and see whether it's just, this seems like a very, uh, irrational reaction at the moment, um, that we should take some time to really look at, and then get the options on the table, and then come back to this, to revisit. That's my thing. Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome, Mayor Slaughter. I appreciate the perspective very much. Uh, Mrs. Katz, you had a comment as well?
Yes, you know, uh, what the mayor just said as far as, uh, keeping our options open, that, that's one thing I was happy to hear. Um, we really, you know, since we are in RVT territory at this point, and paying, um, really, uh, you know, the, 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 the rent that we are paying, uh, we don't know where this is all gonna stand when it's all said and done. Are we going to owe money? Are we going to do whatever? Um, it's, it's, we, we're in flux, we really are in flux. I mean, uh, I don't want to see us become complacent in where we're at, because uh, as, you know, Liz made the statement about no notoriety where we would be if we moved to the bank building. We really have no notoriety where we are right now. Um, nobody would understand or even realize that this is city hall that we're, we're, um, we're occupying at this point. Um, I just want to make sure that we are not going to become rent poor. Uh, that's the one thing I don't want to see happen. Um, so that's, that, that's my statement, because, uh, and one of the other things I do want to agree with Liz, when we moved out of city hall, um, it really did happen quickly. It really did happen quickly, and, and it happened before we even had all the information as far as what was going on with mold and things like that. Um, at this point, it's been sitting empty for so long, Lord only knows what's going on in that building. Um, so it's, you know, I, I, we're just in flux, as far as I'm concerned. Um, maybe everybody, you know, in, in some of the administration is very comfortable where they're at, but I, for me mentally, I kind of look at this as, oh, let's not get too comfortable until we really know exactly where we're going to be. I mean, we hear the mayor saying that he works out of his kitchen, that is not kitchen in there, that isn't a place for a mayor to be working. You know, there should be an office that's set up for him. Um, you know, there are different things that, you know, um, out of respect for the offices. So, you know, that, that's where, you know, I'm coming from. I just want to make sure that we are gonna make sure our options are kept open.
Uh, Mayor Slaughter, by all means.
I just, yes, I just want to, uh, say I, I agree that, uh, we will not become complacent, uh, Councilwoman Katz. We continue to work through. I think as we noted last week, uh, once we get the city assets, uh, whatever transpires with that, uh, related to the, uh, all of the buildings in the city, uh, that we're working through, um, that'll give us again a chance to come back to the table again, look at that, what buildings are staying with the city, uh, what may be, uh, or is going to be transferred, uh, and take a look at that at that point also. Uh, so I think it's naturally, we won't be able to come be, uh, become complacent, because there's going to be a lot of moving parts over the next few weeks and, and couple of months here. Uh, that's going to force us to have these conversations a, a few more times. Uh, and so again, I'll say, you know, when we're looking at short-term, long-term, as we're getting our audits updated, uh, and completed, uh, once they're completed, that could open us up to some, be able to do some bonds, uh, again, if we want to do that and look at now maybe the possibility of constructing, uh, you know, a newer, modern, uh, municipal building, which a lot of municipalities are doing nowadays, uh, that are, now their city halls, because they're no longer, you know, feasible. So there's, there's a lot of options that we continually look at, and we're not going to become complacent. Uh, but I just wanted to, but, you know, that there's still a lot of moving parts, we're gonna continue to have this conversation, uh, quite often over the next few weeks or so.
I'm very happy to hear that, Mayor. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Thank you. I hope everyone can hear me. I, I think my computer's done glitching on me.
Can hear you, Vince.
Thanks, Bonnie. So I mean, we, we, we have these conversations, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting back and I'm listening to, to where everybody's coming from. And I think at the core, where everybody's coming from is, is, you know, we're trying to do what we feel is in the best interest of the people of the city that we're representing, right? Um, I understand where we're at, as far as where certain members of council are coming from. We're trying to save money, uh, every single place that we can. You know, we've been fortunate up to now that we've had some ARPA money to kind of fill in, help get everything up to snuff, um, you know, fill in some blanks. And their concern is, you know, so what happens when the ARPA money is gone and we don't have it there? Um, uh, forgive me, I forget the exact number. I think if we did not have ARPA funds to fill in, we'd be technically, we'd be operating at approximately a $3.4 million deficit. Can somebody jump in and tell me if that number's close?
Yeah, it's, it's a little better than improvements. Um, by next year, likely to be up to four and change.
So, I mean, to have an honest conversation about this by next year, when, if we don't have ARPA funds to fill these things in, we're gonna be looking at a $4 million deficit. Which equates to approximately a five mil tax increase. To every single property within the city of Williamsport. Is that correct? Is that the correct assumption? Yeah, Val. I just did some quick math and um I I looked up a couple of things. And maybe the stats wrong, but where I got my information from. Was that the median household income for a resident of the city of Williamsport is thirty five thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars. So to look at a potential five mil tax increase. You know, if we would ever come to the point where we'd have to raise those taxes to balance a budget. That's that's absurd. To try and put that on there. So I know what we're really at its core, what we need to think about and look at is. You know, just um a history of decisions. That have been made, and I don't mean just, uh, Mayor Slaughter, I don't mean within your administration. I mean, this goes back a long ways. So Councilman Yoder, Councilman Biter, where you're coming from, I completely understand. We need to save money. We need to, we need to do something different. We can't continue to operate this way. So wanting to uh look at changing the numbers, I I get it. I I get it as far as looking to move somewhere else that we can save the money uh save money with. Also, to 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 Mayor Slaughter's point, though, I also get, you know, it was for potentially causing some disruption. So I'll 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 try to sum up my whole little um. Speech, uh spiel here, whatever you want to call it is. So our lease is coming up. Our our RVTA lease is up. How soon?
We have uh four more years.
Four more years, four more years. Okay. So is there a way that? We could move forward, potentially leave the funding in here in case something goes wrong. But put in any kind of procedure or check. To come back in and check on the status of this, to see how we are doing, looking at potential. Negotiating with the county so we can keep this from falling through the cracks. We've got a, we've got to look at saving money every single place that we can. Is is this, is this feasible? Is this possible?
Yeah. Are you asking me, Councilman? I'm sorry.
I I'd like to, Mayor, I'd like to get your feedback. Mr. Yoder, Mr. Biter, I'd like to get everybody's kind of feedback where we're at here.
Sure. So from. From my standpoint, yes, um, I think uh the suggestion you made uh is reasonable and rational and it makes sense. Uh, I'm happy to uh meet with commissioners uh to discuss this formally. Uh, and when I say that, I mean, in a sense that we're actually looking at numbers. Uh, not just they can save us, you know, half the rent. That sounds great. I think we all. Uh, are trying to save money, uh, but we need to really get to uh into the weeds uh to look at what this means. What does it mean for utilities? What does it mean for the logistics of it all? Uh, space wise, are we talking peace as well? Uh, what does it mean uh for uh the services and everything that we're discussing and and are they even able to? Uh, to make the changes that we need to outfit the building uh in that timeframe. So. I think those, there are a lot of questions. I'm happy to to uh to meet with them and 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 you all and council members and. The commissioners to to discuss this. Um, and others, not just, not just the Third Street Plaza building, but as we explore. Uh, other options that may become available to us uh over the next uh few months or so. Uh, so I'm happy to do that and I I would uh also respectfully agree that uh. It it would be, I think, put the the administration and employees at ease a little bit. Um, if we didn't think we were going to be put out uh October, this doesn't hurt uh the way. It doesn't hurt.
So Mayor, if I may, what what do you think would be a reasonable timeframe? To expect these kind of, you know, if we wanted to start to jumpstart these conversations with. With the county and and delve into the weeds here. Do you think? Wha- what do you think would be reasonable?
I think, you know, we could start up after the new year. I think let people get situated a few weeks into the new year and then. I mean, that's that's my personal opinion. I think we could start them. Sometime into January, beginning of February.
Okay, uh, and and please, anybody, feel free to jump in and tell me if uh if something I'm saying may comes across incorrect, uh, believe me. I'm told I'm wrong an awful lot. So for the sake of of this not. For the sake of wanting to continue this to to uh Councilman Biter's point, as far as looking to potentially. Move City Hall operations for the sake of saving money, but also. Mayor Slaughter, for the sake of of doing some due diligence, making sure we have those conversations. Adam, is there a way that we can authorize enough funding for the rent? To get us through. You know, halfway through the year and then revisit this. That way it will force us. That we have to come back and revisit this. This has to be a topic of conversation all the time. If if for nothing less, but then for the sake of authorizing the funds to be to be spent again.
So. Uh, so I think what you're asking is, is there a way to put in some kind of like an actual trigger that's going to force us to come back and circle back on this, right?
Yes, I I, yes, that's that's really what I'd like to see.
Um, I mean, so, yes, um, I I think actually that's kind of what. I think Mr. Biter was um getting at whenever he made the initial motion. So I think that. Trigger. Is like, hey, you know, we've got enough rent. For where we're at for nine months. Um, and then we'll have enough rent. For the Third Street, I'm I'm make sure I get my, I'm getting my names right because I mix them up all the time. Have enough rent for Third Street Plaza at the end of the year and um. So I think we have that trigger in there, right? I think that's kind of the intent. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Beyer, I think that's kind of what you were getting at.
Absolutely, um. In the past, I put timelines on things, uh expiration dates on things. Because I want it to be a topic of conversation. I want it to be front of mind and I want it to be a constant reminder of that. Uh, we have to make sure that we are being diligent and I. Mayor, I appreciate your concern. Employee wellness is a top priority, um, and it should be. Um, and I by no means want to uh move everybody out uh on January first, as I said. I want to make sure that we're doing the best possible for the taxpayers of the city. And right now, I think that having our offices. In RVTA's buildings are not in the best interest of the taxpayers.
Again, I mean, I respectfully disagree. I know I disagreed with that last week. Uh, the only other thing I'll say to that is. Uh, I think we have to be mindful that, again, we have not seen any formal numbers from the county. Uh, we're assuming come October first that we'll have uh the rent. From October to December, uh, maybe you all have seen numbers. I have not uh seen anything official. Uh, and so in the event that they say, you know what, um, we said, uh, you know, whatever number they said that's causing uh this reduction right here. Uh, and they change their minds, uh, that's going to, you know, that could really jam us up as well. So I think we have to be mindful that there's no, there's been no. Formal agreement. We're assuming, uh, I'm not, at least some folks on council are assuming uh that the commissioners are going to. Agree to this lower square uh price per square foot. Uh, and if they do not and or other variables come into play. Uh, you know, that's why, again, I will, I think it's. I think we need to be mindful to keep the rent in there and if we're fortunate to get a lower one, then we can go from there and not need it. It's better than, I think we said it last week. I think. I'm not sure who said it. Uh, maybe Councilman Pulizzi, but I remember to have it and not need it and need it and not have it. So if we get in a position where we need this rent, even if we'd have moved somewhere else. And we weren't to have it, uh, I think we just need to be mindful. There's been no agreements. There's been nothing that has come before us to see that they actually. Are going to do uh what apparently they have told some folks, not not myself. I've not heard anything uh officially. Right. So I just want to be mindful. We're assuming that come October, if this. Transpires the way we're discussing right here, uh, and again, there's a lot of variables that play into that. That we may or may not even have rent to cover. Over there. So, uh, and again, I don't know what happens if if we make this reduction. And maybe this is a question for Norm. I guess we could increase it. You know, if it comes October, you say, all right, we need rent, we can.
Yeah, if I may jump in there, I was going to ask, so what happens if we pass Councilman Biter's? Uh, motion for reduction, we come up to October first. And we're not where we want to be uh to be able to move into, you know, potentially the in into the county building. What then? So then we just uh uh look to to make the resolution to authorize additional funding then to. Continue on.
Yep, we could do a transfer ordinance, yep, to put money right back into it. Um, and and we've done that with other align items before. Um, in the general fund, right? Um, on our time together, Vince. Uh, we've done transfer ordinances for um for different salaries or or to cover, um, you know, different. Different contracts, that kind of thing. Um, we've even used, I'm trying to remember. We pulled something out of legislative contingent. Yeah, we we pulled. We pulled legislative contingency money out of uh our budget, I think last year or two years ago for something as well. So we can. We can transfer money around to to cover that.
I think that may have been for laptops.
No, that was earlier this year, but in in any event, um, Tracy, you uh you have uh uh something to say, it it appears and so.
I want to be really careful in what we're saying. Um, you can transfer. But I want to be really clear that adding to the budget is different than that. So all else being equal, if you didn't have the ability to transfer, you couldn't cover that rent.
Uh, yeah, and I I I understand, uh, we 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 do have the ability to transfer, though.
Right, right. I just, it, all else being equal, if you met your budget, then you wouldn't be able to reallocate to rent. What what Tracy means is we can't take it out of the bottom line, correct, Tracy? That's correct. Can't add to the budget. You can just transfer them online items. So I just want to be clear. Right. So if we make this reduction and the and the funding, Eric, what's the total amount that you're cutting?
The total amount was twenty three thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars.
Right, and and that twenty three thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars just dropped to the bottom line. We can't say, okay, we're going to pull twenty three thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars out of the city's fund balance. Uh, um, we have to, uh, I might suggest moving it to legislative contingency. Um, we have, we have to have it somewhere.
Yeah. I mean, I, go ahead. I'm sorry, Liz. I didn't mean to cut you off. My apologies.
No, actually, I think that might have been crazy. One clarification, even on the motion that you're making, uh, I I'm sorry, Councilman Biter, I wanted to understand, did you say? To take uh some of the rent out of Department twenty two L one, which is Streets and Parks?
No.
Okay, I just want, I was writing very quickly and I just wanted to make sure because that's the Streets and Park Building, not Trade and Transit.
No, n- nothing, nothing out of Streets and Parks.
Thank you.
And and so the only comment I was going to make, I I I, Tracy, if I cut you off, my apologies. I thought it was Liz. Um, my my bad. The only thing I was going to say was, you know, to Ms. to Ms. Mealy's point, um, you know. If 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 we want to have that ability. And not have to look for funding somewhere else in the budget. Um, to our point, we could, we could increase legislative contingency. Um. I can't, I can't speak to how often we really drain legislative contingency either. Um, Ms. Mealy and and Mrs. Katz might be more. Um, able to offer some some broader perspective from that first point, but um, the only other thing I was going to mention was, you know. More often than not, um, you know, I I we have a number of areas of the budget. That generally do come in under and and I. Twenty three thousand dollars is a is a good chunk of change. Um, you know, I I think for sure, but I I think we would also be able to. Make that up in other areas of the budget as well if we would need to also. So I that we, I think we have a couple of options in front of us. To put that money back in as we get into twenty twenty three, should we need to do that? So. But I would, I would be. Personally, I think this is a a good idea. Um, I would be more than happy to also support increasing legislative contingency specifically for that reason. Um, anticipating we might need to do that as we get into next year and feel out how. Um, exploration, formal exploration of that idea goes. I think that, I think that might be actually a a good compromise.
Mr. Yoder, can I make a further point on this?
Absolutely, please.
There, moving is not all, is also not cost neutral. Um, so that is to say that in the long run, we might be seeing a savings if we were to transfer to the county building. Um, but the likelihood that we would not spend at least that twenty four thousand dollars. Um, on the expenses of moving, uh, I I know it's just across the street, but on the expenses of moving. Is low. Um, so. We might be best to transfer it into legislative contingency if that's the will of council because um. Likely we would be spending that fund funding somewhere. It simply might not be on rent.
And and yeah, that's a fair point also. I know when we moved last year, we we used. Pretty much internal resources, um, and I I don't recall that, um, really. I don't, I don't recall that really um driving up um particular areas of costs. I think the 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 other thing what. Or more concerning thing was maybe taking away from other things, but I don't recall it being very cost prohibitive. But to your point, you know, that that's that's also something to consider and I think it would be a. An additional factor that, and to move that into legislative contingency, so.
Yeah, we 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 are theoretically. I I think we were budgeting slightly differently back then as well, and we might be being a little bit more precise. About allocation of funding at this point. Um, so there might. Some of those costs might more appropriately fall under moving now than than would have. Um, I'm not certain, but um, but anyway, just just making the point. Okay.
I appreciate that, Ms. Mealy, and and a good point.
Adam, can I jump in here real quick? I'd just like to. Kind of ask, ask the mayor. Uh, so Mayor, with what we're looking to potentially propose, like like what Councilman uh. Biter had looked at doing, and again, I understand where you're coming from to your point as far as making sure our employees are. Feel secure where they're at and safe where they're at, uh, as far as being in their current location. But if we did look to. Move the twenty three thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars potentially from rent. Or uh, forgive me, I don't know the formal, I don't have the formal budget line item designation in front of me. But from rent into legislative contingency, that would get us through the first nine months of twenty twenty three. We can always look to move it back to your point. If you say, you know, come October first. We don't, we're not ready. We're not there. You know, we haven't moved along. But I I think that that ultimately this may be a good thing, at least to set ourselves, to set a goal for ourselves. That, you know, this is something we have to make sure that we're working on. Would you, I mean, it, would you feel okay with with this if we look to do this?
Yes, I think uh that was the point I was making earlier. So I agree uh to move it into. Legislative contingency or whichever line I didn't want to have so that we have it in the event that we need it. So yes, I would feel much more comfortable. Um, if we weren't just getting rid of it out of the budget, but we were putting it somewhere else as we continue to explore options, I think. Um, the whole point is that we are actively continuing to explore options. Um, and as we're doing that, I don't want us to have to end up one day on the street. Um, if the options are not ready yet. So, yes, to your point, Councilman, I think everybody's point, actually, I think this is, I think we're all. Now making the same point, actually, um, that we're going to have it. In an area, we continue to have conversations, we continue to explore options, and if it's needed, we have it. If we don't need it, great. So, yes, I feel comfortable with that.
I I appreciate that. Uh, thanks, I. There's been so many times I've had a conversation with several people that we're all saying the exact same thing. It's just being presented a little bit different. So. We're disagreeing, however, we're all agreeing. Uh, it's just the way it's being presented. So uh, to Councilman Biter's point, thank you very much for bringing this up. Uh, I think it it really helps us move along. Uh, I think it, it really helps us move along, having the conversations that we need to have to, uh, set goals for ourselves. Uh, so that's, uh, I think that's very good. And, uh, to the mayor's point too, this is, you know, setting these goals for ourselves is certainly gonna be the, the, the things that we need to progress. So, thank you. I'm done, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Pulizzi. Any, any other, uh, go ahead, Mr. Byder.
I just wanna, um, make sure that I'm doing things correctly for clarification purposes. Um, the twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, then should I, is it appropriate that I make the motion then that we move that to, uh, legislative contingency, which currently has seventy-five thousand dollars in it?
N- no, we'll use a separate motion to do that procedurally, um, and then, uh, and that, and that'll take care of it. So.
May I ask for another clarification?
Yes, absolutely.
The seven hundred and thirty, I, I believe it was seven hundred and thirty-five dollars from IT is coming out of City Hall operating, not out of the general fund. Is that correct?
Uh. Because that's, I, I would think so, if it's located in, if it's located in, uh, City Hall operating, yeah.
So I just want to clarify where that's coming from.
Correct. Uh, i- if, if, if there, if that line item for rent is in City Hall operating, then that's where it will become, be reduced at, yes.
It is.
Any other comments or questions, uh, related to, uh, Mr. Byder's proposed amendment? All right, uh, hey, I just a- appreciate the dialogue and the, the, you know, the, the discussion on this, you know, I, th- this is, this is an issue that we, that the city's really tried to tackle for a long time. We're gonna continue to do it. We all have different thoughts, but, um, I, 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 I'm happy to see that we agree at least on a little bit of an approach. Um, and, and, and I, I appreciate all of that from everybody between council and the administration. So, but I, I, I'm glad to see that. So, um, Mrs. Frank on the, uh, motion to amend.
Mr. Pulizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to amend passes five zero. Eric, you wanna make the, uh, proposed amendment for legislative contingency?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we take the, um, twenty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and move that into legislative contingency.
Is there a second? Oh, sorry, Eric, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I was just gonna give the total for what that line item would be then.
Oh.
Uh, so that would take that to ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars from seventy-five thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Is there, there's a, there's a second, okay. Um, any additional questions, comments, clar- items of clarification? Okay, hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the, um, motion to amend the legislative contingency line item.
Mr. Pulizzi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to amend passes five zero. Okay, um, we've knocked a couple out. Are there any other um, potential changes, um, items that others would like to look at or discuss? Um, while we still have this one open?
Um, so I, I would like to, um, to discuss a couple of things, if I may.
By all means, who is yours, Mr. Pulizzi?
So, and again, I'm gonna jump up on this box here. Metaphorically, and, and something that I wanted to bring up regarding, uh, both, uh, regarding, well, particularly regarding the, uh, request for, uh, for some additional police officers. Um, moving forward into, for twenty-twenty-three. Um, you know, I understand wholeheartedly. Like I said before, you know, we, we can't continue the same course of action, uh, and expect different results. Uh, I understand that we're all trying to do our due diligence, uh, and follow through with the responsibilities that we swore an oath to, uh, to make sure that we are looking out for the best interest of the residents of our city and to make sure that we, we, uh, move forward and, and to do everything we can to help them. Um, you know, the, the expenditure, it continues to be a problem with potential deficit spending. Um, you know, when I first looked at this budget and I saw the request for additional police officers, uh, you know, my first inclination, just looking at the numbers of it, my first reaction was, we can't afford this. How, how are we gonna pay for this? Um. I also understand too, though, is that we have an obligation to the residents of our city to make sure that they are living in a safe and secure environment, right? Um, my understanding is right now is that our police officers are working overtime. Uh, e- e- extremely high amounts of overtime to the point to where they're starting to get burnt out. Um, and that worries me. Um, I'm concerned not only for the safety of our officers, but also the safety of, of the public. Um, you know, if, if we have officers that are so burnt out that they can't even, um, you know, have the potential to do an overtime shift because they're just, they're exhausted. And then we end up with not having enough officers to cover whatever shifts it may be, and then something bad happens, what then? Um, if we don't have an officer there to respond to a call. Um, you know, in that sense, and then jumping over to the other side of it is looking strictly at the numbers. You know, when we look at how much money we've spent in overtime, paying overtime for the officers, I can't help but ask myself, you know, is it fiscally makes sense to actually grant additional officers so we can reduce the overtime? You know, when you look at time and a half versus straight time, and there's a lot of variables to consider that the, you know, the, the normal hours, they, they cover, you know, benefits and everything like that, and at some point in time, overtime is actually cheaper than straight time. Um, but when you're looking at chief, I feel, uh, help me, um, how many overtime shifts did we rack up last year? Just overtime shifts.
Just per shift overtime shifts, we're pushing almost seven hundred shifts that we generated over the last year to cover, to pay for.
Seven hundred shifts for overtime. Um, and obviously at, at overtime rates. Um. You know, it, it kind of puts me in a situation to where one part of me is going, we can't afford additional officers. But the other side of me sitting here saying, we have an obligation to the residents of our city to make sure that they stay safe. And if having right now forty-eight officers that are being run ragged um, jeopardizes not only the safety of our officers, but the safety of our residents, then we need to look at doing something different. Um, you know, I, I think that as a whole, we'd like to see positive changes moving forward. Uh, Adam, uh, the last meeting that we had, you know, we said we'd like to kind of see a, a little bit of a different view. Uh, moving forward with the, the approach. And I think that you know, this might be the first step in, in potentially seeing a different approach is by taking a little bit of a different approach. And it's, it, it puts me in a little bit of a, uh, uneasy territory myself, because, uh, again, I approach everything as kind of dollars and cents. But I, I'm thinking that overall, for the progress of the city, if we don't have enough adequate law enforcement to make sure that we can reduce crime here, how do we intend to really help bring people to want to move here? Um, if, if we can't create a safe environment for the people. And I, I, I'm sitting here thinking, at least we give it a shot. You know, if we, we grant the officers and if it doesn't work out, well then, you know, we can always come back down to where we feel is a good number by rate of essentially attrition with, if we have officers retiring. You know what I mean? If we don't see the results that we're hoping for. But, um, I'm willing to, to give it a shot. Uh, and, and, you know, I'm bringing this up, not to change it, but I'm, I'm bringing this up to kind of explain to everybody where I'm coming from. And so we can at least move forward and start a dialogue about this. Cause I, 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 again, I understand where members of council were coming from. Maybe, um, I too was coming from that exact same position that we can't afford this. But I think what we need to do is tell ourselves, we have to be able to afford this. So we move forward with this and then working with the administration and working with the other organizations, working with whoever we have to work with, with the county, with, um, it doesn't matter to me, we have to make this work. Uh, that's all I'd want to say. And I'm happy to, to, to listen to whatever you guys, wherever you're coming from. Uh, again, it's a difficult topic to talk about. Nobody wants to talk about it. But these are conversations that we have to have. For the sake of progress and for the sake of moving forward, we have to talk about it.
M- Mr. Pulizzi, I, I, I get it. I mean, when we openly talked about this last week, you know, this is this is an area that, um, it's an area that I think most of, if not all of us, understand both sides of the argument, right? We, we, we get the, um, we get that, we get the demand and, um, why there's such a demand for our, our police, uh, department and, and why we currently have the staffing that we do, right? Um, and, and I think we, we want to support our police department and, and, and do the best thing we can for them, right? Um, conversely, we, we understand the, the fiscal situation that we're under, um, and, and those are all very valid points in that argument as well, right? Um, and you know, this is, this is a department that is a, like, large, um, contributor to our annual operating costs, right? So I, I certainly get where you're coming from, you know, um, the, 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 the counterargument to that, right, is, um, and, and I, I know, um, a number of, of people disagree, um, with this perspective, and that's perfectly fine, right? And I certainly respect, understand that, but the, the counterargument is that this is an area where we have other entities that we could work with, hopefully, to, um, bring added support in um, to help, um, minimize or reduce the amount of service that we would lose. Um, a- and it's really one of the only areas that we have to do, to do that, right? You know, whether it's um, another regional police department, whether it's the state police, whether it's deepening our relationship with, with the county um, for, 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 for support in our police services, right? Um, this is, this is really one of the only departments we have where we can, um, we have um, surrounding departments around that we could hopefully work with to, to maximize what we're doing. Um, and, and, and I, you know, the, the reason that is, is, I mean, because uh, of, 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 of the law, really, right? Um, you know, I, I know Chief Snyder uses the, um, the, the, the statistic about where we should be based on a city of our size, and that's, that's a legitimate statistic, um, and, and that's backed up by, um, you know, ample sources of data and, and statistics, et cetera, right? Um, by that measure, uh, I'll use Loyal Soc, for example, so they're about a third of our size, and by that statistic, they should be having a police department of about fifteen or twenty. Right? Uh, but, but they don't, um, because they use other, other sources of, of policing, right? Um, and I can't sit here and say if, if one's more effective than the other or not, but I think that's something that we have to explore more formally. And so, um, you know, that's, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from, um, just to, to kind of offer the counterargument that, that Mr. Pulizzi is, 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 is bringing forward. And, uh, and I'm not gonna say Mr. Pulizzi's wrong. I'm not gonna say that I'm right. Um, you know, that's just simply articulating both sides of the argument here, right? Um, I think, I think that we need to, I think that we need to, um, structurally make that department look different because of those other sources of support that we hopefully could figure out a way to utilize more.
Can I, can I ask you a question, sir?
Sure.
Wh- where are you getting your information from to use these other resources and how are we gonna use these other resources? Because I know it's not me. I wish you would have come talk to me again. Here we are again. You have yet to come talk to me about even what we're doing in the department or what our ideas are. Excuse my frustration, but here I'm blindsided again, because I've had fifty-one officers put into budget since the get-go, and yet nobody's talked to me about it. And here we are, now we're gonna sit here and talk about it, and I get blindsided. So these concerns didn't come up in the past how many weeks with me? Cause nobody's talked to me about it. I have lots of ideas, I have lots of stats, you've yet to come talk to me. I've asked you time and time again to please come talk to me, see our ideas. You keep talking about regionalization and using other entities. Please tell me how then, because I don't know how to use them, because we can't. We can use mutual aid, but that's out of request, but mutual aid is exactly what it is, mutual. So we in turn provide mutual aid to those entities as well. We as the city of Waynesport have to sustain a police department and work with what we have right now. So with what you're offering, I don't mean to be disrespectful, with all due respect, what you're offering is not feasible. So I don't know where you're getting your information. I'd like to hear about it, or who you're talking to. I'd like you to talk to me about the ideas. Right now, we've been, yo, you talk about the, you know, Mr. Pulizzi brought up the definition of insanity. Is repeating the same mistakes over and over again and expecting a different result. We've been running on low manpower or personnel for the last how many years? We're doing the same thing. We have less officers now than when I started in two thousand and six, and our police officers are dealing with more. Go back to what Mrs. Katz said a little bit earlier about not wanting Mr. Nar to get burned out. Exactly. She made a great point. She described our police department right now. We can't go at, we can't go at the rate we're going. Even giving us fifty-one is not gonna put us there. We're still gonna be well below the national average and the state average of officers per one thousand. But looking at the numbers, we're only over two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in the budget this year as a- opposed to last year's operating costs, or which would be this twenty-twenty-two. We've added in several things. We've added in the capital budget, cause now we're doing it properly. That's been lessened because we removed the emergency rescue vehicle. We are, um, adding three vehicles with three slots of, of new officers with the increasing gas. We're still only two hundred and ninety-five thousand in operating costs from la- from the twenty-twenty-two budget. So, yeah, my proposal is let's try the fifty-one, because the last how many years of working with what we're working with and trying to, to, to sustain it by create or covering the overtime isn't, isn't working. We got officers making a hundred and twenty and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, based on the overtime that we have. We can't keep going at that rate. We have to change something. I mean, and I am open to all the, the suggestions that you have. I, I don't know how else to say it again, to invite you to have, you know, you come over, look at the ideas, talk to our administration. When's the last time you've done a, all of council, please tell me the last time you've done a, a ride along with our department to see what the temp is.
Two thousand and fourteen. Yeah, it's been.
Two thousand and fourteen. Things are a lot different since two thousand and fourteen, I'm here to tell you.
It's been too long. Yep.
We have retirements coming up. My proposal is let's try the fifty-one, see if it gets us in the right direction. It's not gonna fix it, so please, I'm not saying it's gonna fix it. But if we get the fifty-one officers, we start going in the right direction, see what happens. If it's not working, we got retirements coming up. That, then we, we lose those slots by attrition now. But doing it the way we've been doing it, we, we can't continue this, sir, and I'm sorry for my frustration, but I just, my heart goes to our officers, because I, we're the ones that have to go. My heart goes to our officers because I, we're the ones that have to go see what they're doing. See how they're running and gunning. They're getting burned out. We have officers now that are putting me on the do not call list for overtime because they're too tired to work. They're too exhausted. We're trying to do more with community involvement. We can't do more with community involvement because we don't have enough. We have officers that are running call to call to call. Trying to catch up on reports. They're trying to catch up on charges in between. We, you know, and there's no time for community involvement. We just did a survey. Survey I'm going to share with you guys here in near future. Community wants to see more police officers, more police officer presence and more engagement or more community involvement. We can't do those things. With what we're doing with the staff that we have right now. We can't continue on this path.
Well, well, chief, um, you know, you're. I, you, you probably want to hear, but I, I understand the frustration and I, I think your frustration shows your, your. And, and I think you're, but you're think you were. Frustration shows how much you care about the police department and I think your commitment to, to policing and, and I, I understand and I'm, I'm, I guess. I don't know if this sounds right or not, but I'm glad to see that, um, because I think that passion is. Um, is needed and, and I'm glad to see that. So, um. I guess let me ask you this, based on your proposal, Chief Snyder. So what? When we're sitting here next year, okay? Um, we give you the three officers that you're asking for, um. What does going in the right direction look like? Like what, 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 what does success? Sitting here next year to you look like?
Again, this is the stuff I'm inviting you to come over and talk to me about. So the success looks like potential ideas. So we have ideas, we have, you talk about revamping things. One of the things I like to look into, not saying it's going to happen. But looking into switching up the, you know, doing ten hour shifts, doing four days and three days off. That could potentially help us. With, with the, the operating or more efficient operations and, and sit in some cost savings in the end. So right now we can't even do that with forty-eight, it's not enough to even entertain that right now. Um, so we're trying to get to a point where we start looking at other options like that. We're trying to put more things in play with uh, different ideas we have. You know, I have some, I, I have a whole bunch of ideas. I don't know if they're all going to happen. I've been wanting to share them with you. I've been asking you to meet so I could share these ideas. Now that I have the, the. Survey done, I want to complete my, my strategic plan for the next five years. A lot of those uh, items that we've done in it. Are already completed within that strategic plan. Um, so we're looking into constant things. I'm still constantly looking into other departments, how they're doing it. How are they doing it better? How are they doing it differently? What can we look into? So we have a lot of things and a lot of ideas. I would love to sit with all of you and talk about them, not on these forums all the time. But to, to see those ideas. I'm reaching out and talking to other chiefs and other administrations at other departments, seeing how they're doing things. You know, you sit there, one of the, the departments that has been compared to us is Easton. Easton PD, Eastern City, they're dealing with the same. Population that we have and they have sixty-three officers and six civilian staff. We're not even close to that. You know, we have forty-eight officers and we have three civilian staff. So we're doing better. We're getting more efficient with the equipment. We got, you know, uh, software that we've obtained over the past year. We got more software coming. We're looking at way, uh, things to do. We got grants that I'm pretty confident we are gonna, we're gonna get. Um, to do, to do more. And, and to help with our cost savings. But you have a different style coming in. I'm relatively new at being a chief, so. I, I inherited what I inherited. I'm trying to work with what I got, so I can't change it all right away. I'm trying to lay the foundation to get us in a better direction, get our city in a better direction, get our department in a better direction. And then so when I'm not here and I hand this off, it keeps, the momentum keeps going. But we can't, we can't keep doing what we're doing. It's not working. Cause we're paying for it anyway. We're paying it, you know, we're pushing four hundred thousand this year on, on the overtime. You know, paying on the overtime. We're over our budget on, on the overtime. If you add the overtime and the comp together. And if I'm all wrong, like I said, we'll, we'll take the slots away by attrition. You know, when we get our retirements coming up, we have potentially five retirements, roughly five, give or take. Retirements coming up. Relatively soon in the near future, our potential retirements.
If, if I may ask a question about the retirements. You had mentioned that there are two retirements on January sixth.
That's civilian, that's our civilian side, yes.
Civilian side, okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
Forgive me, when I wrote that note down, I didn't have a clarification as to what it was.
Yes.
We have no potential retirements with, uh, we'll just say in the next six months within the police department.
Maybe. There's a lot of variables in place, so I don't want to say absolutely, but there's the potential for it, okay?
Understood, understood. So. Right now with forty-eight officers that you currently have. With these three officers, that would get you to the fifty-one. By the end of the year. We may be hovering around fifty. Potentially.
Potential, that it could be that. And I also want you to understand though, by the time we fill those positions, we have to do our, we have to do our civil service test. So we're looking, projecting at the end of February, beginning of March to start the testing. It's going to take a little bit and then whether or not they're already certified or not. It's going to take a little bit till we even get those positions filled. So you're looking at about a half year. Or so, it's a very rough guesstimate that they're not going to be employed, so we're not going to be spending that money.
Got it, thank you. Um. So. The way that I understand it then, how you're explaining it, those, those three new officers that you're requesting. Yes, we may see an increase in the overall number of officers, but really that's just going to help maintain you stay whole. For.
We're not even whole, sir. We're not even whole. We're so understaffed, we're not even there. I'm just trying to get us closer to that point.
We'll just say, we'll say current then to what we're at, so.
Okay.
But I, I, and I, I, I appreciate everything that you're saying. And just as I mentioned to the mayor earlier, employee wellness is paramount, specifically for your officers. They, they need to be well rested and sharp when they come to work. Because if they're not, the consequences are, can be catastrophic.
Right now their wellness is being, it's, we're sacrificing their wellness. Because now I'm sitting there, what do I do? Do I start cutting some services? And I don't want to do that, but we can't keep doing what we're doing. Because then potentially what happens is that aside from the overtime and then we, they start using sick time. Then we start paying out sick time, then we still have to cover the sick time slots with overtime. Because when we're not well, we use more sick time.
If I may, I, I appreciate. The, the dialogue and again, uh. I think we, we can all hear it in each other's voices and, and the tone that. You know, this is, uh, it just illustrates that the way we've been doing things is frustrating. Um, and you know, we, we need to see that, that uh, we have to start having some conversations on. How to look at moving forward. Um. You know, uh, so to that point, I. I think that. You know, with this budget, we look to keep the police department to, to, to determine Mr. Bider used. Um, current, at least for now, um, through next year. And. Try to make sure that we, we um, find the time and I know it can be difficult for myself. Uh, as well, running all over the place. Um, to make sure we prioritize sitting down with. I'm sorry, to make sure that we prioritize sitting down with. Members of the police department. And the administration, um. To come up with some, to listen to their ideas, come up with some other uh, ideas of our own. You know, collectively to figure out, yeah. Do we want more officers? Of course. Do we need more officers? I think yes. And. Figuring out what we have to do to be able to afford. To have the officers that we have. Uh. Whether that means renegotiating with entities, uh, charging services to organizations that utilize police. Whatever it may mean, but. We, I think that we have to make sure that we're, we're prioritizing our, our police department. Um. And again, I, I, I understand exactly where, where you're coming from also, Adam. Uh, it, it, it can get frustrating. It really can. Um, you know, we see it all the time. Trying to make sure that we're doing the best for. The elected, uh, or, or for all of our constituents, making sure that. That we're making the right choices on their behalf. So they can continue to pay their rent and afford to live in Williamsport to, to have a, uh, you know, uh. A, a good decent quality of life, but also that balance is that making sure that we also provide. A safe and secure environment in which they can enjoy that quality of life. So. Um. Again, I, I bring this up not to look at changing it, but only merely to illustrate that there's. There's certainly a lot of conversation that, that I think we all have to look at having together collectively to try and. Resolve these issues. Um, cause I would certainly hate to see us here in the same situation again next year. Dealing with the same problems. And I think that most everybody could probably agree with me that. We don't, none of us want to see that happen. We want to see things getting fixed. So.
Chief, I, I have a question to ask you. With the um. Overtime that you've had this year and you said you went over budget. Um, going over budget, would that pay the salary of one officer?
One officer's, their starting salary for this year is fifty-five thousand, one hundred and some change. So if that puts it in perspective.
Okay, um. I will say this as an elect, as elected officials. When we're out there campaigning and even talking to people after we're elected, there are three things that, that. The taxpayers of our city always ask about. They want safety, they want good roads and they, they uh. Want lower taxes. So there are three things that are constantly being asked. Um. All the years I've been on council, even before council, that I've been on council, that this has been a, a. A bugaboo all the way around because. Every chief has asked for at least fifty-one officers. As far as, as long as I've been on council, I don't think it's ever meant that requirement. Um, you try to get there at times and what happens is you get the retirements, you get the uh, the officers that are either deployed. Or you get the officers that are off sick. So you never reach that fifty-one. Um. Uh, the thing that I, I, you know, I, I would like to ask the question, I, again, go back to overtime. What has changed with this much overtime?
Policing has changed. So we're doing a lot more with policing. We're covering a lot more. So the overtime that we're talking about, when I talk about seven hundred shifts, that doesn't even account for the court overtime, the event overtime, the investigative overtime. That's just to cover shifts because we have to maintain a certain amount of officers on the street to provide safety to our community. So, um. The overtime. Right now, we're, we're at minimum with our officers. And then so if one takes off, we have to fill that slot. On that shift and bring somebody in to work that overtime shift. And that's happened about seven hundred times over this last year.
Well, the, the one thing that I've heard in, uh, for all these years also is the amount of time that, that is spent in the courthouse. When you, and the officers that have to sit there at times all day sometimes. Because of the court cases. I mean, that, that's taking an officer off the street also.
Well, that happens sometimes with the trials, man. You know, but yes, it does take us out there, but policing itself is changing. You know, we, we are catching up with the times with the, with the, you know, there's more, there seems to be, you know. The crimes, there's more population. We have more people coming into the cities. We have a lot of transient. We got the, the colleges. Um, so I know our, our, what we, our census says we have, but we're dealing with, with way more than what our census says, which is about twenty-eight thousand. So we're dealing with a lot more than that. So, and then with technology itself, just our investigative division, trying to keep up with the technology with the cell phones just alone. Is ver- is very difficult. So we're putting in a lot of time trying to counter that. Um, with the investigative stuff. So, uh, trying to catch up with the times with the, with the technology. And, and what's out there today to counter that, there's a lot more, uh. Technologically involved crime. That we're dealing with now with identity theft and whatnot. And so the services that are needed and, and the, the. The time that's needed to do that. So, and the, and the office, and the power, the manpower, so.
Well, I agree with you as far as, you know, uh, keeping up with technology. I mean, it, I think it's difficult for all of us because. It, 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 it's a rapid thing that's happening all the time anymore. It's not like it used to be years ago where, you know, it would take years for something to come up. Now it's like I said, every day something new comes up and even trying to, to uh, accommodate your phone at times. Is, is a challenge because of the new programs that come down. Forget about computers and things. So, and I know the software that you've been uh, requiring and things like that for your body cams for, for so many other things. I mean, there's a lot of technology that goes into this, a lot of training. And, and again, the training takes people off the streets. So, you know, and, and I can understand that, I really can. Um. And I think, you know, I think. What we're all looking at, at council is. The amount of money that's coming into the city tax-wise. Does not cover all of our expenses. And I think you understand that you see that, uh, where we stand. We really need. Uh, to change a lot of things that are going on in the city. We've got to be, bring more, more businesses and we've got to bring, um. More people living here in the city instead of running away from the city. Um, because this is what pays for all of our services and it, it's. It's very um. Disheartening when you look at the whole bottom line that our population keeps on decreasing, but our expenses keep on going up and up. And trying to justify where we're going with everything and what our citizens do want and. And really demand, they do demand safety. We all demand safety. What's the first thing that happens when something goes wrong? Call nine-one-one, you know, and we all understand that, you know, and like I said, streets, streets. That's another thing that people demand. They don't want the potholes like that. So, you know, we are in a catch twenty-two as far as. Looking at the budget, how much money is there to allocate to everybody that needs it? And, um. But I also understand where you're coming from. We can't afford this overtime. We just can't afford this overtime. We can't afford, and I'll go back to my initial statement with Gary Nar, burnout. I mean, you know, uh, so many of us are getting burned out with what we're doing because life is done, uh. A one-eighty, we're all doing more jobs, we're all doing. In our private lives. So therefore we're all, we're all chasing ourselves at this point. Um. Because the world is just moving on a faster scale. So I, you know, I don't know, I, you know, my mind is, it's going in a million and one directions, chief, right now. And I'm sorry that I haven't made the time to sit down and talk with you. Uh, as you understand, it's been a rough cou- couple of months for me.
Yes, ma'am.
But I, you know, I fully would like to, to sit down and see where you can come from as far as running our. Police department. Not that it's not efficient now, but because of circumstance to run it even more efficient and where can we go to get more help? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you there, chief, sorry.
No, I was just saying thank you to Ms. Katz. I appreciate that.
Yeah, vice versa. A, a lot of good points, a lot of good dialogue, right? Um, you know. And, um. Un- unfortunately, we're not alone. I mean, I think we talked about this last week, you know, there's, I think every third-class city is kind of facing this dilemma, right? Um. And so I guess, you know, chief, to your point, um, I know you would reference, I think, Easton, right? Um, you know, I, I, and you know, they're, they're one of the probably other examples that. You know, we can learn some things from. There's, there's plenty of other, I think, cases. In the state of Pennsylvania that operate under the laws that we have to operate. That are facing similar issues that we are facing. Uh, I think there's things we can learn from them and how are they managing these two issues, the need for police? Um, and the need to do it in a responsible way, um, when the debt, when the, when the fiscal deck is stacked against them, right? Um, so I, I, I'll, I'll leave, I'll, I'll leave the floor with this, you know, I'll, I'll look forward to this conversation, chief. I think we were. Texting the other day and I think, I could be wrong, um, correct me if I am, but I think the ball's in your court. Now just shoot me some dates in January and we'll tie something down. Um.
I will make time for you.
Sounds good. I look forward to it. Um, any other comments? Uh, I mean, we, we, we don't really have any motion here. Um, I think we've had a lot of dialogue about an issue that we all, um. Feel. Um, in one shape or form, I think we've had some good discussion. I don't know if there is, is any kind of motion from anybody. Um, I suspect not, um, and so we can leave that at that. Are there any other, um? Are there any other um comments or um or questions or proposed changes that anybody else would would like to make? Um, we've made a handful yet last week, a handful this week. I hear crickets from the other members of council, so.
Mister Yoder, it's Captain Bell. Are you able to hear me?
Yes. How are you, Captain Bell?
Good. Yourself?
I'm good. Good to hear you.
I uh, I just wanted to take a moment, and I want to echo Chief Snyder's sentiments. Um, I'm pretty sure there's probably other city councils, and there's probably other departments having similar conversations that we're having right now. Um, and I know that one of the things that we like to do is to to look at other agencies and look at other municipalities and say, well, what are they doing? Um, but I'm gonna echo Chief Snyder's sentiments, and I think that I encourage every member of city council to maybe come out and ride around for a bit and see the officers face to face. I think it's easy to talk about numbers and get very wrapped up in talking about the dollar signs and the numbers and uh statistics, but I think that one thing that we we miss out on a lot is the human element of it. And I think if you come out and you meet our officers on the street and watch them work a while and uh maybe maybe we lead the way in this for other municipalities to maybe come to us for a change and see how we're doing things. Um, so I just wanted to echo Chief Snyder's sentiments. Um, I I think it'd be a great thing for members of council to come out and ride with us and uh ride with their officers for a little bit and at least see them work. Yeah, it's an awfully lonely feeling when one incident can tie up a majority of your shift and you get sent to a call alone. And that's a, it's a little bit different when you're going to something like that alone, and there's not other people coming right away. Um, so I I think that those are important things that you can't really have an appreciation for without seeing them firsthand. So again, I I'm just echoing the chief's sentiments, and and I look forward to having uh the members of council come out and and watch our people.
Appreciate it, Mr. Bell. Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions, proposed changes um on the the general fund budget? Okay. Okay, um. I think uh I think that we can take a vote then on the um on the final budget um in second reading. So uh no other proposed changes or or comments. Uh, Mrs. Frank, I would ask you to take a vote or call the vote on the um actual main motion for second reading.
Mister Pelisi.
Yes.
Mister Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mister Yoder.
Yes, uh, main motion passes five to zero. Um, and we have a twenty twenty-three budget. Um, a- again, I'll I'll echo some of the sentiments I I shared last week, you know, um, just between members of council, the administration. Um, I appreciate all the work um over the past number of weeks related to this process, um, both um, you know, work sessions, um, I know finance had some initial upfront work as well with the administration. I appreciate that. The collaboration between council and administration in these meetings approving this budget, but also um, you know, the work of of the administration, you know, we we can disagree on um different things with the budget, but nonetheless, um, I'm glad to see um and and thankful that we we have a budget. Um, and and we were able to go through this process sooner together, um, and uh I'm I'm thankful for that as well. So thanks, everybody. Appreciate it very much. Um, we will move to item six, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance of the city of Williamsport, county of Lightcoming, and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania fixing the tax rate for all city purposes for the year twenty twenty-three at sixteen point two two mil.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Janice. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Um, I apologize. I just realized, Mayor Slaughter, I never gave you a chance to introduce or say anything to lead off with the with the last one as well. So um, I'll 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 give you the opportunity here if you if you if you need it or or want it.
No, I don't either. I just echo uh your sentiments that I think this was a good budget process. Um, it looked different, significantly different this year. I thought it was good collaboration between administration and city council. Uh, and I think it's just going to continue to improve moving forward with the folks we have in place. So I appreciate that. I don't have anything to add to this ordinance. It's uh setting the the tax rate at sixteen point two two.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Um, so this is setting the tax rate for twenty twenty-three. Um, this is the same tax rate that we had last year, so this is not increasing property taxes, okay? Um. I'll open the floor. Any comments or questions from any members of council?
I've spoken enough tonight.
We got a little bit in front of us, Vince, so get ready. Okay. All right, I'm I'm hearing and seeing no comments from other members of council. So this would, this would keep the tax rate as it is, so no tax increase. Um, and uh, and so um, I think uh, I think most of us are happy to see that. Um, and while we running recognize, you know, we're gonna be facing some pretty difficult decisions over the next couple of years, at least this year, and so in the midst of a pretty crazy inflationary environment, um, continued just economic volatility. Um, I think that this is a a good thing to help our our citizens through um going into next year, so. Um, no other comments are quite.
Yep, I agree with what I agree with what you're saying. This has been a a frustrating couple of years for for anybody living anywhere at this point. Um, even though we may be um biting the bullet in the next couple of years, it's it's gonna, we're gonna be in for a bumpy ride, and we all know that. Um, but this year, I don't think anybody needs to have uh their taxes increased, even though I know there are a couple of us on council that feel that every year should be an increase of at least a quarter. And uh, but this year, I think I I follow through with thinking of how hard it has been and is right now with inflation for our taxpayers. But hold on, people. It's gonna be a bumpy ride in the next couple of years.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Any other comments or questions from other members of council?
You know, I said I was done talking.
So too soon.
Gotta open my mouth again. And kind of to just go where Bonnie uh was. You know, it it has been crazy. It's and it's not just been, when I think about crazy, it's not just been a crazy year for us. I mean, I sit here with members of a council and a mayor with an administration that um, you know, we were thrown into it from the very first minute, and even before then of our inauguration. Uh, they were literally protesting as we were sworn in. Uh, and there's the old adage that that smooth seas don't make for good sailors. And, you know, I'm hopeful that moving forward with us as council, working with with uh with Derek and 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 his administration, going through all the craziness, whether it be protests, whether it be uh different authorities, whether it be, you know, city hall, whether whatever it may be. Um, I'm confident that we're gonna, that we're gonna get there. Uh, and that we can all work together, and that we're all gonna come out on the other end of this a lot better. So.
We're gonna have to open up our brains, Vince, and come up with creative, creative ways of doing things.
Yes.
Here, here. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Okay, hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank, on the uh motion for the tax ordinance, please.
Mister Pelisi.
Yes.
Mister Bider.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
No.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mister Yoder.
Yes, motion passes four to one. Um, we will move to item seven, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance in first reading, amending part one of codified ordinance of the city of Williamsport, creation of an emergency fund for the city of Williamsport.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All right, um, I'll uh I'll introduce one this one here a little bit, um, and I'm happy to turn it over to uh Ms. Mealy as well um for uh for the finance commentary. So this is an ordinance um establishing an emergency reserve fund. Um, and so if you guys, if you all recall um, over the last two weeks, um, we we maximize lost revenue. Transfer that through the budget, et cetera, um, and have allocated general fund money um indirectly now from that ARPA process to um initially capitalize this this uh emergency reserve fund. So what this ordinance does, um, this is essentially outlining some just very basic guidelines for the operation of it and and what what it can be used for. Um, and and I think most importantly, um, removing money out of it. Okay, um, and and what it would take to remove money out of it. Um, thi- this was reviewed in finance, um, and I'm happy to turn it over to Ms. Mealy. Um. Liz, I'd be happy to address a couple of the questions, I guess, that came out of that. Um, but I'm happy to do that after you. You know, you go over the conversation as well. It's up to you.
Adam, it doesn't make a bit of difference to me. So uh you you decide, I think, you know, um, but we we obviously had a a couple of questions in finance, and I believe that you and uh Tracy sorted some of that stuff out yesterday. Um, so I think probably you should start there.
Yeah, that's certain. Certainly, certainly. Um, so let me actually pull it up here. Give me a second. Um. So uh, a couple of the questions that were brought up um in finance were um give me a second here. So a couple of the questions that were brought up in finance, and and I'll uh I'll I'll thank uh Tracy uh for her help um and 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 um collaboration on on clearing up a couple of these. So, um. So first off, um, there were, there were questions on the the verbiage under um section A um about it being a cash account. Um, so Norm had initially recommended incorporating that um just to kind of establish um the 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 role of council really um in this, but the language didn't match up structurally to how this would actually work from the finance end. And so um, working through that with Norm and Tracy, um, we just really eliminated that because it actually ended up not really being needed and being redundant. And so um, it now reads a fund known, all right? Um, and 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 that's, and that's perfectly fine. It 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 works for the financial end structurally, um, and 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 it doesn't impact anything that Norm was really trying to accomplish with that recommended change either. Um. There was verbiage added under item B um, and noting that it's placed in a sec- separate account, um, and that's just strictly for um, from what I recall from the conversation, just to make sure um, it it's it's separated, it's um, it's 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 accounted for separately, that kind of thing. Um. Couple of the other um a couple of the other um big changes, and thi- this really didn't come up um that I recall in the finance meeting, but it did come up in the conversation with Tracy, and I and I and I want to hit it. Um, so she had recommended a couple of changes um that more that aligned with, I think, the intent um of 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 um, and it of uh having this initially crafted. So um, the verbiage change on item C under surplus funds, it now reads any tax revenues received by the city treasurer in excess of the budget amounts in the city's current adopted general fund budget shall be transferred into the emergency reserve fund on or before March thirty-third of the subsequent year. Um, so there's two different things that are different, and and that that have been incorporated, okay? First off, it clarifies that it's tax revenues, uh, meaning that it's strictly tax revenues that are collected by the city treasurer. Um, and that delineation um is important to make because we do give other sources of revenue, right? So for example, um, let's say, I mean, we just had a conversation about policing and trying to, you know, maximize revenues for particular things that we help other entities with. Um, you know, it, in the conversation, we thought it made sense to not have any additional revenues that um would come in on those types on the on non-tax levy tax line items go into this because they're generally probably ideally going to help support those specific functions rather than just the um overall, overall city, for example. Um, the other item that is a little bit different in here um that we incorporated um for for first reading was on or before March thirty-first of the subsequent year, and that is really um to ensure that um this can all be done at one time um after accounts are reconciled. Um, and so it's just gonna be a lot easier and more streamlined for the finance office to actually move funds into that based on this. Um, so it's really um financially clerical, right? Um, and then item D, and this is highlighted, um and and this was actually in the revision that we went over in finance, Liz, and this was one of your questions was, um is it a two-thirds vote of all members to re- to transfer funds out of it, or is it a two-thirds vote of all members present? Um, and it is two-thirds of all members of city council. So um, for any funds to be transferred out of this, you would need five votes. So right now, for example, if the five of us agreed now to transfer something out of this, we could do that with a five to zero vote because we are five of seven members of council, right? Um, however, if there was a, it was a short meeting, there were only four of us, we cannot do that, right? So we could not do that with just a simple quorum. Okay, um. So tho- those are some of the items that we um worked through um and and it kind of updated. Um. And that I think that answers your specific question about the quantity of votes as well, Liz. Um. That kind of really sums up the the conversation. A couple of other um points, if if you're okay with this, Liz, that I'll that I'll add, um, that came out of the conversation with Tracy. Um, so first off, um, she shared a document um that I thought had an interesting um item in it that I think is good to discuss, and maybe we think through this um as we work through this process. So it was a policy statement, or recommended policy statement from a professional organization that that she's um you know, a part of um that that works with this kind of stuff. And they reference having goals of a range of 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 where to get this funded to, right? I think I forget what the percentages were, but it was essentially based off of revenue. So essentially um some guidance on on goals as to um as to what the to to build this up to and and maintain. Um, and I thought that was interesting, you know, because, and I think it's not a bad idea to consider um if we would even want to look at codifying this in like second reading, for example. Um. You know, I I I think uh I think I think having a good reserve is very, very important. Um, you know, but at the same token, you know, I don't, I don't think any of us want to build this up to a hundred million dollars uh by by any means either. And and so I think, you know, maybe looking at offering some guidance for future councils uh might be a wise idea. Um, the other thing that Tracy had mentioned, um, and I and I I I very much um agree and um, you know, uh, so th- there's the behavior element um that I don't think that we're really gonna run into or or have to deal with, but I think future elected officials in the city when we're all not here are gonna run into. So um, when you look at the surplus funds line item, right? We, thi- this references putting surplus tax revenues in here. Um. You know, the the human element of 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 budgeting, um, you know, it it there's, there's a, there's a risk down the road of this forcing um future administrations and future councils to over budget um revenues, for example, and um, I I I think Tracy had even mentioned, you know, I think other municipalities have probably run into this um issue in the past, and and there are ramifications of that. So there is a human element that comes into play with this idea of surplus funds um that I do think we need to be aware of. I don't know that I'd be super concerned about it, at least initially, but it is something that I think probably should be factored in um down the road. So, but that was a lot of the other gist of our conversation with Tracy and Norm. Again, I appreciate the collaboration with her. It was really helpful. Um, and I'll 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 yield the floor, Liz, if there's anything else from finance that you would like to um, discuss or 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 articulate. I kind of hogged the floor from you, sorry.
Adam, I don't necessarily need the floor. I simply led the finance committee discussion, but since you were the other participant, um. You were the other main participant along with Mr. Byder in the finance committee discussion. I see no reason why I should get to chime in more than you. Um, that said, I think the opinion of the finance committee, all two of us, uh, was relatively positive on this item, uh, provided that we succeeded in sorting out. Um, some of the more semantic, uh, elements of it, such as the creation of the fund, what, what the nature of the fund was, et cetera. Um. I would agree that there is a hopeful future point, um, in the city where there would be too much money in the reserve fund. And we would be committing, we would be forcing the treasurer to commit too much funding to the reserve fund on an annual basis. Um. I would however note, Adam, that at that point, uh, future council, um, and mayor could collaborate to simply remove or change the restrictions. Um, and so I'm not, I'm not certain that, you know, and, and, you know, five members of council could vote to remove a bunch of money from it to do something exceptionally cool for the city. Then, um, but, uh, you know, and, and frankly, in, in the meantime, between now and then, we may well vote to remove a bunch of money for this. For something far more prosic, uh, from this, for something far more prosic. Um, this, this does create a rainy day fund. We, we know that. Part of what we're hoping to utilize the, the rainy day fund for is, is both Levy and Graffius run concerns that, that we are. Are concerned that we won't be able to allocate, um, allocate funding to within the twenty twenty four deadline for ARPA funding. Um. But, uh, but you know, the, the, there are other uses and, and frankly, the ordinance does not call out specific. Things for which the money can be used or specific things for which it cannot, um. Consequently, you know, we're, we're relying on this council and future councils to determine, um, what this funding will be used for with, with very few restrictions. Uh, but I think it is better to have a reserve fund than not to, and consequently, I'll be supporting this item tonight. Um, and, and thanks for coming up with the concept, Adam, and, and helping us to, um. To, to take full advantage of the lost revenue clause, um, you know, we, we have moved revenue into the general fund. And consequently, we are able to move, um, funds out of the general fund to create a rainy day fund for, um. Uh, ideally for a couple of specific items and maybe a few other things, um, within the city here over the next several years. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Um, any, so I guess any comments or questions from, from other members of council?
I think you covered all bases, Adam.
Thank you very much. Now, and I, I appreciate that. Uh, okay, um, hearing and seeing none, then we'll, uh, we'll call for the vote. Mrs. Frank on the main motion, please.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Um. Okay, um, Mrs. Frank, item nine is next on my list. I believe that's the contract for, uh, government finance solutions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, we'll go to item nine then, please, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between the City of Williamsport and Governmental Finance Solutions.
Is there a motion in a second?
Removed.
Second.
Motion in a second, uh, Mayor Slaughter. The floor is, I, I believe this is you. I don't know about that, sorry.
Yeah, it's me. I mean, we're both here, obviously, Tracy and I, but yeah, so good evening, President Yoder again, and, uh, Vice President Castmember of Council, which have for you is resolution. Uh, agreement between government finance solutions and, um, City Williamsport. Uh, nothing has changed in this contract. It's the same as, um, as what was, uh, passed before as far as monetary. There's been no changes. It's the original agreement, uh, that we've had with, with Tracy, uh, in government finance solutions. Uh, and so this was reviewed in finance and of course, obviously, uh, Tracy is here.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Uh, this was reviewed in finance, I believe, as well.
Yes, this was reviewed in finance, Adam, and I think, um. While, um, while all the members of finance are glad to see this coming back for council review, it is also abundantly clear, especially now in the middle of budget season. Um, how indeed we still are government finance, uh, solution services, um, for the moment. Um, I know that Mr. Byder had mentioned that he was interested in, um, creating another sunset clause for this agreement. So that it comes back in front of us so that we can reexamine, um. The amount of time and, and the need for government finance solutions, continued services in the future. Uh, Mr. Byder, I don't know if you had a specific time that you were interested in, in, in creating a sunset.
Um, we had looked at in the past, I believe it was, uh. In ninety days or was it a hundred and twenty days?
It was.
Yeah.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty days. Okay, I, I thought, I, I originally proposed ninety and, uh. Councilman Mealy, you had, uh, suggested a hundred and twenty, which I, I do agree with a hundred and twenty. Um. I think a hundred and twenty days is a good time period to look at this contract again, um. And the other thing that we had put in on that was an eighty-five thousand dollar, um, cap. So a hundred and twenty days or eighty-five thousand dollars, whichever came first. Um, I'd like to have that be the precedent again for this contract. Um, I would also just like to add that. When this comes up again, the next hundred and twenty days, um, I sincerely hope that we have some sort of plan presented to us by the administration. Uh, for the hiring process of a finance director, so that way we can get the ball rolling on this.
Mr. Byder, you making, you want to make, if you want to do that, you want to formally make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we amend the contract to have a one hundred and twenty day, uh, limit or eighty-five thousand dollars, whichever comes first.
Second.
Yeah, motion in a second, okay, um. Any, any further discussion, um, questions, comments, uh, relating to that motion from Mr. Byder and the second from Mrs. Katz?
Um, I'll, I'll just say what I said at finance, which is that I actually believe that a nine month timeline is a bit more appropriate since that is. Sort of the timeline on which the administration has talked about substantially reducing services from government finance solutions. Um, we were, you know, the, the proposed timeline for a new hire in the finance department, which we ultimately did not wind up changing at our last. Uh, council meeting last week, um, is, is six months until we hire a finance director. And so an additional three months would give that person time to train with Tracy, and that would strengthen us perhaps being a more appropriate time to. Revisit this agreement and, um, potentially try to revise our use of government finance solutions downward. Um, not that that, not that those numbers actually appear in this agreement, but just have a discussion about. Trying to reduce the number of hours to the government finance solutions committing to our finance department.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy, um. Now, I, 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 uh. I don't foresee Tracy, uh, so this is me personally. I don't for, I mean, i- i- I guess as long as she's willing to work with us. That's the first thing here, um, but, uh, I don't foresee Tracy's services, um, sunsetting. Um, personally, within the next calendar year, um, I think. The amount of services that we, um, would need from her, I think will gradually change. And I'm hoping gradually change as we get into the, the next twelve months. Um, I think ideally, you know, as we, um, kind of finish up triage. And go into rehab, um, we, we, we see that trend downward. Um, but, um, I, I, I suspect and I would support her. Um, being here, um, in some, in some sort of capacity for, for the next year, uh, because of that. I, I do. I personally do like this idea of, uh, another, you know, formal trigger though. Um, I, I just think it gives us that, that, that trigger, um, that we need, I think, to ensure that we. Have this discussion, right? And, and to Mr. Byder's point, I do think, um, you know, I think by this point we would be what? Um, mid, mid-April, I think, uh, ish, right? Um, and so I, I, I would really like to see what Mr. Byder had said, right? What is the plan moving forward in the department? That's not only just. Hiring, um, I actually hope that we have a pool of candidates by that point. Um, I think based on the timeline, that might be possible, and we'll, we'll, we'll see. That's okay if it's not. Um, I, but I would really additionally be interested in. What's the long-term plan? What, 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 what do we need future levels of staffing? What is it and when? Um, what was found? Um, you know, what, what was corrected? Um, how do we mitigate it moving forward, right? I, I think, um, I think some kind of a, uh, document. So, um, summarizing a lot of these things would be very helpful, at least for me, to, to understand that, um, you know, um. I, I, I don't know that it would be too much, um, to, to put together at that, the appropriate time before we revisit this contract as well. So, um. I think having this, this additional sunset on here, um, gives us a formal mechanism to revisit that, and I think that's important. Um, for, uh, I think that's important for, um, ensuring that we, we're moving in the right direction. So, um. I guess I see both your points, but, uh, but I, but I would agree with Mr. Byder's proposed change as well. So, um. Any other comments or questions related to, uh, the proposed amendment? Okay, um, hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the proposed amendment, please.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion to amend passes, passes, excuse me, five to zero. Um, we're back to our main motion. Any other comments or questions? Um, related to, to this item? Okay, um, hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the main motion, please.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, um, a motion passes five to zero. We will move to item ten.
Resolution to authorize submission of an application for phase two of strategic management planning program funding.
Is there a motion in a second?
Removed. Second.
Motion in a second, Mayor Slaughter. The floor is yours again.
Good evening once again. Uh, what you have before you is resolution authorizes submission of this phase two stamp. Uh, as part of our financial strategic plan, as we move into phase two now. Um, this is really a formality needed for D C E D, not so much, um, necessarily for us. This is for their records, um. Just, uh, saying that we're moving it to phase two, which would be the financial software, the H R software. Um, and first due, uh, which we're going to talk about here in a little bit with the fire department. So just letting D C D know that we're ready to move on to phase two now of some of the recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Uh, this was also reviewed in finance, Ms. Mealy.
I, I, there, there wasn't a whole lot to review on this one, Adam. Um, the discussion was, uh, was largely positive, given that this is funding that we've. Um, been in discussions with D C E D for quite a while about, and will obviously help to fray impacts to at least this year's budget. Um, so, uh, so. I, I support it, and I believe Mr. Byder does as well.
That I do. Here, here. All right, any comments, questions, clarifications, anything from other members of council? Okay, hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion for item ten.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Uh, this, we'll move on to item eleven, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to follow municipal records manual.
Is there a motion in a second?
Removed. Second.
Motion in a second, Mayor Slaughter.
Yep, uh, good evening once again. Uh, what you have before you is a resolution, uh, to follow municipal records manual. Uh, this came about as we are starting to transition more and more to, uh, digital. Uh, Chris Black is currently working on R F P for, uh, digitization of records, shredding, et cetera. Uh, that we're going to look at potentially here in twenty twenty-three, where his council passed, um. For you all to get technology, uh, and so as we're going through this process, you know, Chris and I said. We should have something to see how long we have to keep different records, whether it's in the mayor's office or city council or the city clerk or. Community development or whatever. Um, and so we reached out to, um, Austin White, who actually pointed us to. Um, this municipal records manual, uh, that was approved, uh, by the state in two thousand and eight and amended in. Uh, twenty nineteen, which basically, um. Uh, if we adopt this resolution, gives us process and procedure to follow as we move forward, um. With whether it's digitizing, shredding, how long we have to keep certain documents, et cetera. Uh, and so, you know, this is a hundred and some page document, and Austin said the easiest thing for us to do. Um, in order to be in compliance with all the laws is to just adopt this, uh, and then whether it's myself or Chris or. Uh, Janice Frank or department head or whatever the case might be, they can then reference this manual. Uh, and as long as we follow the laws laid out in there, uh, we will be covered, uh, from a compliance standpoint. So that's what this is. Uh, per Austin's recommendation, of course, it was reviewed by Austin, uh, and also in, uh, public works, I believe.
Yes, it was, and thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Bonnie, this was reviewed in public works. Anything you care to add? Bonnie? Bonnie, sounds like Bueller.
He's muted.
Bonnie, you're muted if, if you're there. Okay.
Okay, uh, but I was also there, so.
Care to shed some light on the conversation in public works? I think you were there also.
I, I was. No, um. Yeah, no, this is, uh, pretty much something that we agreed that we certainly need to have moving forward, um. I- if for nothing but to, you know, standardize. The, the way we need to move forward with our records and our record keeping and how to handle them, but also then to, to give us some clear-cut guidance on. You know, uh, how long we need to keep our records. So we know what we can actually dispose of them and create some more free space should we need to, but it just helps to standardize exactly where we need to be.
Thank you, Mr. Pelosi. I think Bonnie's back. Anything to add, Bonnie?
No, I'm fine. I have nothing else to add.
All right, sounds good. Any other comments or questions from other members of council? I'll, uh, I'll, I'll take a minute and put a plug in for, uh, former councilman Dave Banks, um. He, uh. He had, I think it was last year or two years ago, had, uh. Worked on, um, bringing forward a resolution to, to start the process of digitizing city government, and I think we're. Probably behind where I think he was hoping we, we would be at this point, but nonetheless, um, I think he would appreciate this. So. Dave, if you're out there listening, I, I hope you're doing well, man. So. Hearing and seeing none, uh, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. We'll move to item twelve.
Resolution authorizing a stacking agreement between the City of Williamsport and the redevelopment authority and bank authority.
Uh, is there a motion in a second?
Removed. Second.
Motion in a second, Mayor Slaughter again.
Yes, good evening once again. Uh, what you have before you is an item, uh, we've been discussing for a little while now. Uh, and I think we said it would be on this agenda here, uh, so we're very happy to see this. Uh, come forward as we spread out the last few weeks' agenda items. Um, this is a staffing agreement between the City of Williamsport, uh, and the redevelopment authority slash land bank. Um, whereas we've been discussing for quite a while now, um, as we are, uh, getting very close to ready to trans. For the allocation to the redevelopment authority land bank. Um, as we're all aware, they don't have, uh, any staff, of course. Uh, and so what this would do as they acquire properties, if there's, um, some paperwork needs to be done and processed, um. This allows our community development staff, uh, to serve, uh, as their staff and the redevelopment authority with slash land bank. Uh, would reimburse them, uh, at their current rates. And so that's what this staffing agreement allows for. Uh, in the resolution, so that we can hit the ground running here, uh, in twenty twenty-three. Uh, January of twenty twenty-three, uh, I know. City council, the administration, the development authority land bank are ready to get this rolling, uh, and see. You know, the fruits of some of our labor and how that's going to positively impact our community. That's what this staffing agreement does. It was reviewed by Austin White. Um. Um, and reviewed and, uh, forgive me, I forget if it was finance or public work.
Uh, I think this one's the E R C, actually.
That's right. I'm sorry. Yes, E R C. Thank you.
No worries. I'm trying to divvy up the workload and, uh. It's easy to to mix and match a little bit, so I I do it sometimes myself. Uh, Mr. Byder, this was reviewed in E R C.
It was, um, not too much to add to this, just the, um, thank you very much for getting this ball rolling. And we can get some staffing there so we can start to give some teeth to these authorities that we gave the money to through ARPA funding. And, uh, start to see some progress.
Thank you, Mr. Byder. Um, I I I would second that. This is exciting to see. Uh, I I I think. I mean, we we've, we've, we've hit the point, you know, we need economic development really, really bad. And and I think, you know, we we've. We we've, we've looked at economic development through a traditional lens of, you know, spurring development, right? Um, and 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 for good reason, you know, there there's, there's a lot to be done there, but we have not been very. Successful or or have not looked at, you know, the, um, the this side of economic development revitalization of, um, underdeveloped. Um, property and and really enabling our 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 redevelopment authority and land bank to really push this. So I'm excited to see this move. And get going, um, you know, I just, um. I can't say that enough. So this is good to see. And so let's, let's, let's get going. So. Any other comments or questions from other members of council? Hearing, seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Um, Mayor Slaughter, your last one, item thirteen, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing execution of agreement between city and Williamsport Direct Energy Business LLC. And Adam, I forgot to send this to a committee.
Yeah, that's okay. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, uh, Mayor Slaughter, uh, I'll, I'll give you the floor one last time for the year.
Yep, good evening once again, President Yoder. Thank you for that. Um, and what this is, is, uh, an agreement, as was noted, resolution agreement between Direct Energy. Uh, and the city of Williamsport, uh, they are a broker. This is for electric and gas, uh, services. Uh, as we're all aware, the market is extremely volatile, uh, clearly, uh, and they have secured. Uh, at this time, the best possible price, um, that we could get. So that's the agreement you have before you now. Uh, just to utilize them moving forward, um, for our, uh, electric and gas. Um, services.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. This was not reviewed in the committee. I I I completely missed that we forgot to put this on there. So that's, that's on me.
I did too until the other day when I was.
Yeah, so, um, I I I I think a lot, a lot of other members of council chime in, but I think this is pretty straightforward. So I don't think there's anything super crazy here. Um, but I'll, I'll yield the floor to other members of council, um, if they have any comment. Oh, Miss Mayor Slaughter, you have something else?
There's one other piece that he wanted me to let everyone know that it. If the market, it's not likely to happen, but if it, you know, comes back around and, you know, energy costs decrease. Uh, we can always do a blend and extend at that time as well and then disagree. So he did want to note that. Couldn't be on tonight, uh, due to a previous, uh, engagement, but he did, uh, email me and say, please share that. Uh, but that is a possibility if energy costs are to correct themselves a little bit, which is unlikely, but we could do that. So I just wanted to add that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Appreciate that. Um, any comments or questions from other members of council on this item?
I have none.
Okay. Hearing, seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion for item thirteen, please.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Um, we'll move to item fourteen, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to concur with the city of Williamsport redevelopment authority transfer of real estate.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, uh, Skip, welcome.
Uh, good morning, or yeah, good morning. It's almost morning.
It's almost morning, hey, we only got a couple hours and then it's morning, so.
That's true, but good evening, President Yoder, members of council. Uh, we're bringing forward tonight to you. Uh, a resolution to concur with the actions of the redevelopment authority in transferring the land. Located at sixteen twelve, uh, through sixteen twenty-two Scott Street. To the greater like homing habitat for humanity, for them to develop six. Single homes on the site and then to have, uh, the, a small pocket park developed. Uh, at the end of it, um. The contract also includes language relevant to a, uh. Grant of two hundred thousand dollars from the home funds and seventy thousand dollars a year for the Chodo funds. To help, uh, subsidize the construction of these six units. Uh, the home funds will be. Carried as a silent second, so that if the owners of the properties ever sell or, uh. Refinance the properties, the city will be reimbursed for the funds that were awarded to the project. To get it completed, um. This is an opportunity to take a piece of land that's been sitting vacant. It was part of the memorial have pride, uh. I'll, I'll say apartment project and, uh. I, it's high time we get, get this completed. It it's languished for a couple of years because the process wasn't followed. Correctly, this was done through a public bid process. There was only one bid received and that was from Habitat. Uh, in discussion with some of the private developers that that did look into it. We did it through, uh, Penn Bid. Uh, they just didn't feel that, uh, it was a project that they wanted to take on. So with that. We're hoping for your concurrence. This was, uh, reviewed at Economic Revitalization Committee and also by Norm Lubin.
Thank you very much, Skip. Uh, Eric, uh, E R C.
Uh, yes, this did go to E R C. Um, there was a representative from Habitat there. Uh, it's not necessary that he is here this evening. Um, greatly appreciated that Habitat is stepping up, uh, and going to do the development of the six parcels there. Um, they explained a little bit about their process and how they go through. They have ten applications that they've narrowed it down to for six homes. Um, their design process changes based upon the families that they select for the home. So if they need to make a bigger home. Because there's potentially four kids in that family or so on, or there's only three, they will change the design. Um. Habitat is a, is a wonderful program and, um, it's great to see that there's going to be some stable home, homeownership. Um, to butt against that neighborhood and, um. Give it more reason to be successful in the future.
Excellent, and thank you, Mr. Byder. Um, are there any other comments or questions from other members of council?
Yes, I do, Adam. Um, I think this was, goes, goes back to, uh, skip the, the Brodak project.
That is correct.
And what happened was this was supposed to have, I think, two homes from Habitat. And I don't know if, like you said, it's something that happened and things fell through. I'm so happy that we're, we're getting, getting more than the two. And to complete that project, to make that whole area even more whole. So I I'm really happy that this is happening.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Ms. Mealy, I think you were going off mute. Think you have a comment?
Yep, um, yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So Skip, I think when we initially talked about this, um, project. And and maybe this came before finance committee. I'm actually, I'm struggling to remember in what context we talked about it. But anyway, um. You had, the, I think this was just a two hundred thousand dollar grant to Habitat, but you, but that, the, the, it was utilizing. Funds that were coming from the city's, um, homeowner support program that we have, we have one point two million that's come back to the city. Um, in that program that we can once again lend out to, um, new home buyers. And this was utilizing those funds in a permanent fashion. The city would not have seen their return. But my understanding is that now that that's been, uh, changed, correct? And to my way of thinking, improved. Um, this funding i- in the, in the eventuality that these homes are, are sold. Um, or refinanced, that the funding will, will come back to the city, um, which is exciting. I think that they, our initial discussions, I was nervous to see. I, I mean, it's, it's, it's only fifteen percent, sixteen percent of the, uh, of that one point two million. But I was still nervous to see that leave the city's hands and and not return into the home buyer fund because we've heard. So much from, from realtors, how, um, how, how more of that funding is needed in the local economy. Um, so I'm excited to hear that it will come back. It may not be for quite a while, but but that it will come back to us. Um, so thank you for, um, for overseeing that change, uh, Skip. And, um, and this is a great agreement. Habitat is an excellent organization and this, this is a project that I, um. I oversaw it, its initial incarnation is as, uh, potential townhomes. And then when that fell through, um, you know, it became a proposal to, to. To fund a larger habitat project and I'm excited to see that now coming to fruition. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Any other comments or quite, uh, Mr. Pelosi?
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Byder, I think, um. Habitat also intends to put in a small, I don't want to say park, but playground.
Yeah.
As well, in addition to the six homes. Um, Mr. Bemay had mentioned it, uh, it's called a pocket park. Uh, yes. Pocket park. So I mean, that's, it's another great use of the space, serve the, uh, the, the needs of the children immediately. And as they get older, they could certainly just run down to Memorial Park, but another great addition.
Thank you, Mr. Pelosi. Any other comments or questions?
I think worth mentioning, Mr. Yoder, that that park will be maintained by Habitat. Correct, Mr. Money?
No, they, they're gonna build it at the end of the, the construction period. They will dedicate it back to the city.
Uh, okay, so that was a misunderstanding from our earlier conversation or has that changed?
It was, it it originally. My interpretation of our conversations with them is that they were going to, to keep it in perpetuity. But because they do not have a, I'll say homeowners association or any means to, um. Maintain it beyond the construction cycle, uh, they're gonna build it. They would like the city to, to accept the dedication of it back to them. So that it, it was still stay in, in, in good shape. And no one could claim, any of the homeowners could try to claim priority to it. It becomes a city, city property. And it can be used by all the citizens of that community, not just the one or two mem- people that live in those homes.
Okay, and we've, and this, we've cleared this with the streets and parks department and they feel comfortable taking on maintenance of this parklet as well?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, just making sure. I mean, you know, that's, that's an extra tiny little parcel that we have to stop by and mow once a week in the summertime. And, you know, an extra set of parks equipment that we have to, um, make certain is in good, um, order. And and that does add expense and and time to, um, to, to the, the streets and parks budget. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mealy.
I have a question.
Mrs. Katz.
Skip, what kind of equipment are they putting in this park?
They're, 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 this, it is, this is gonna be a, a very passive park. It's gonna have a couple of benches. It's gonna have some trees and some bushes. And basically, that's about it. It's not gonna be a recreational facility. It's going to be a, an area where you may, may go read a book or, uh, catch a couple of rays. If, if you don't have, uh, an open space at your, your house or something like that, an area to meditate if you're into that. It, it's not gonna be a recreational facility.
Just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you, Skip.
So we're literally talking about mowing the grass.
That's all, sir.
All right. Okay, any other comments or questions for members of council? Hearing, seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. I will move to. Uh, thank you, Skip. Uh, we'll move to item fifteen.
Resolution authorizing an agreement between the Williamsport Bureau of Fire and Higher Information Group.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, Chief Onks, we are. Good evening, sir. How are you?
I'm well, yourselves?
I'm doing good. The floor is yours, sir.
So, um, before you say an agreement between the City Williamsport Bureau of Fire and the Higher Information Group. Uh, the Higher Information Group, um, they are, um. Going to be, um, installing an access control solution. Um, not to exceed eight thousand ninety-eight dollars and eighteen cents. Basically, it's for door security. It's a Bluetooth I car, I D card reader and a pin pad or a keypad, uh. Yeah, a keypad access to the firehouse, their fire headquarters on Walnut Street. Um, over the last few years, we've had a, a few incidents where, um, people have been able to come in, um. You know, uh, uh, we have no idea how they even got in, but they opened the door, they were able to come in and. Um, so for, for that reason, there's been some discussion over the last few years about getting some, uh, security for the doors. Um, and that's where, um, Chief Lucas and I reached out at, to. Um, of the Higher Information Group, they are, um. They're, they're a very high-tech group and are very interested in working with the city. So, uh, other than that, any questions or anything or?
Thank you, thank you, chief. Uh, so we had your three going to public safety. I know John was not able to make it, uh. Any other members of public safety that we, we have a conversation?
Yes, we did. We had a conversation with this. Uh, number one, we do have to say that, uh, the, the dollar amount that's in the resolution is not correct. Okay, we have to add seven hundred thou- seven hundred dollars onto that. Um, so that I don't know whether we need an amendment or that or.
Yeah, we'll need to amend the resolution to increase it by seven hundred dollars.
Okay, so I think the first thing we should do is do that amendment then. Let me, says, three, eight. Three, one, seven hundred. Okay, I'd like to make an amendment to change the dollar amount and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, chief. But, you know, uh, I'm doing this by hand, not used to doing this by hand. Um, uh, I think the dollar amount should be eight thousand, uh, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-six cents.
Uh, we have eight thousand ninety-eight dollars and eighteen cents.
Okay, I really screwed that one up, didn't I?
That's all right. I'm with you. I went to Jersey Shore, so.
I should be ashamed of myself. I was taught by nuns. Okay, so that's the amendment. Dollar amount here.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions related to the proposed amendment to the resolution? Hearing, seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the proposed, uh, amendment.
Mr. Yoder, um, chief already made the amendment and then sent me a new resolution, which I had sent on. It should be in your Dropbox. I don't know, but I do have the right resolution. It's eight thousand ninety-eight dollars and eighteen cents.
Oh, nice. All right, well then, Mrs. Katz, we don't have to do that.
Okay, see, I wasn't aware that. I don't know. I don't have the Dropbox.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
I'm old school. I'm still doing papers.
Yeah, no worries.
Chief, we're, we're, yeah, I'm sorry about that.
No, no worries. I, I missed it, so it's okay. Uh, any other, any other comments or or questions then from public or from public safety or other members then?
I think this is an excellent idea as, um, Vince and I looked at this, it, uh, to realize that there were people that could. Vince and I looked at this, it uh to realize that there were people that could have access to the fire department. Was kind of frightening. It's about time uh that they did get um high tech here and uh. This is going to be, um, I'm trying to remember, Chief. This this was looked at by a by city solicitor, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Austin looked at it, reviewed it and uh approved it.
Okay, and and this is from what I understand, the uh. The card itself will only read at the doors.
Well, it it's not so, it's not so much a card anymore. It's the, and this is what the the difference was. Um, it's. A Bluetooth reader, so as your phone gets closer to it or gets close to it, it will allow it to open. So.
That's what I, that's what I remembered in the conversation now.
Yeah.
Okay. So they can use, they don't need to necess- they don't have a card, they can use their phone. And uh a certain amount of uh distance is allowable with that.
Right, right. I think. I think they said it was about thirty feet.
Okay. Fantastic. And other than that, um, the discussion was good.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Any other comments or questions related to this item?
Uh, just a couple from me, Adam. Um, uh, sorry, Chief, is this an ongoing contract or is this a one-time the the access control is installed and then? If we need to maintain.
One time, yeah, sure. It's it's a one-time contract. It's a one-time fee.
That must be the only thing left in the world that operates like that. Okay, uh, next question, where is the funding coming from?
Uh, that it's coming, oh boy, I had it written down. I don't have it. Facility maintenance, that's where it is. Thank you.
I'm just gonna say, Chief, yeah, that was where it's coming from.
All right, sounds good. That would, that was all, Chief, but thank, thank you. Thanks, Adam.
I forgot to mention that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from other members? Hearing seen none, then, Mrs. Frank on the motion.
Mr. Pulzy.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. We'll move to item sixteen.
Resolution authorizing an agreement between Williamsport Bureau of Fire and Lundie Construction.
Is there a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Chief, you're up again.
Okay, um, so again, this is uh between City Williamsport Bureau of Fire and Lundie Construction. Um, what it is, is the uh. Renovation of the kitchen at Fire Headquarters. Back in nineteen ninety-three, uh, it was about a year after I came on. Um. The administration had come from City Hall back over to headquarters. And we had to rearrange everything. Our kitchen actually became our uh. It became uh the administrative aides office. The day room or what is now our kitchen is our kitchen, our uh. Training room. Um, i- and i- it's pretty much our all-around room. Um. We have our meetings there, everything. And so back in nineteen ninety-three. We lost our kitchen and we gained one room. So um that that was the last time that that was renovated. And we're starting to have a lot of issues with the doors and. Um, the the cupboards, everything just, you know. With time coming, you know, falling apart, basically. So, um, Chief Killian, at the time, uh, last year, had included it in the twenty twenty-two budget. Uh, we had started working on it. Uh, Chief or not Chief, but Scott Jolyn. Had started working with some companies who. Um, gave us quotes. There were two quotes that we got. We found out that we had to do an RFP. And so then we started working with uh John Sander. Who got us on board with uh Penn Bid. We put it out to Penn Bid. And Lundie Construction was by far the lowest. Uh, the, they they came in at twenty-four thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars. Uh, the other quote was around eighty-six thousand dollars. It was a huge difference there. So, and one of the reasons for that big difference, uh, w- we believe, you know, we can't say for sure. We can't put. You know, words in their mouth, but um we we think that the other company was was just putting in. Um, a quote just to put in a quote. And the the, yeah, they didn't really want it. So, um. As it is Lundie Construction, which is a city, city business. Um, they came in at twenty-four to twenty-eight.
All right, thank you, Chief. Um, this was also reviewed in public safety. Between Bonnie, Vince, anything from public safety?
Uh, yes, the the dollar amount, uh, the twenty-four thousand that's coming out of uh. Uh, again, what, Chief?
Facility maintenance.
I had, I had facilities down, but I didn't put maintenance. Um. Uh, looking at what they, what they're gonna do for twenty-four thousand, I think is terrific. They're doing cabinets, countertops, sink and lighting. Which this is a for the fire, fire department, this is the the second home. For these men, they eat, sleep and work there. So, um, this is necessary to to get done. So I think it's uh. For the price, I think it's it's really good. And this was reviewed by a city solicitor, right?
Yes, yes. Um, in in addition to that, I don't think you received a copy of it, but um, well, we're. AIA document A one O one uh was something that Austin had requested and. We did receive that. He reviewed it and made a few changes. Um, so we will be forwarding the modified version to um. Lundie Construction.
What is that document, Chief? What does it consist of?
It it basically can, it says um what work will be done, how much it will be done for. Um. When it will be, you know, that it will be done in a timely manner, that kind of thing.
Okay, I wonder that, when are they gonna?
The that we don't know just yet with, uh, I I spoke with Alex up at Lundie Construction. And she said that one, once we get it approved. Um, and we can move forward, it'll come out of next year's budget, the twenty twenty-three budget. Um. So, uh, she will, on- once we get that taken care of, then she will uh try to schedule that. Um. As as soon as they can.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Bet. Any other comments or questions then from uh other members of council? All right, hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Pulzy.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Y- yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes four zero. Uh, last one, Chief Onks, item seventeen. Uh, Mrs. Frank, if you would read that, please.
Resolution accepting a contract with first due for software for the fire department.
Is there a motion in a second?
Don't move. Second.
Motion in a second, Chief Onks, you are our last resolution of the year.
Good deal. So before you use a uh contract between the City Williamsport Bureau of Fire and First Do Software. Um, what this is, is a records man- records management system. And it interacts with the Pennsylvania Fire Information Incident Reporting System. And the National Incident Reporting System, so Penfers and Enfers. Um, this also, this program is also able to um ac- acknowledge our eight-day work cycle. Whereas the software that um pay, pay time. Paytime is not able to um to to work with our eight-day pay cycle. So what this will do is they'll have a bridge between first due and uh paytime. That will be able to send our uh scheduling and everything over to paytime. For for payroll. Um, the 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 records management system is something that. Um, the the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Not officially yet, it's still in legal hands, but you know, everybody that I've talked to through the the. State Fire Commissioner's Office have all said that, you know, that that's who we're going with. Um, I was just in a meeting a few Fridays ago and the attorneys pretty much said the same thing. So, um, this, the the software um is kind of in conjunction with. The the pay time and the um BSNA software that that we're working with and. Um, if Molly, Molly, if you have anything that you'd like to say regarding uh first due?
Sure, um, so we looked at first due probably six months ago, Chief. And as we were assessing different HRIS and financial systems. This was something that we wanted to ensure that we could account, that the system could accommodate first due. Um. Uh, the fire department has an anomalous uh scheduling system that um. It was difficult to find a system that would work uh with paytime. Paytime could not do it on its own. So there are a lot of bells and whistles that that we appreciate with first do. In addition to the scheduling software and it just, it just kind of fell together. So, um, we're excited to be able to bring all of the systems together and we're hopeful that it'll, it'll work well.
Okay, thank you, Molly. Um, one of the other benefits of first do is that it will. The number of modules that come with it. It eliminates a number of other software systems that we need to um. Pay into uh subscribe to. So, um, the other benefit is that. There there's a very good possibility. I need to talk with uh Gary, but. The codes department may be able to um to to work within this program as well, to do their inspections. So, um, any questions or anything?
All right, thank, thank you, Chief. Um, this was the last one reviewed in public safety. Bonnie, Vince, anything to add from the conversation?
Uh, yes, this is a, I know so many different departments are going to record managements. Um, you know, the police department has it, um, codes desperately needs one too. So this would be nice if it does work in conjunction. Um. Chief, this did go through the city solicitor, right?
Yes.
Okay, and.
Months ago.
The dollar amount is coming out of uh. What I have written down here, and I don't know whether what this means, contract service, D C E D funded?
Yeah, so that, that. Go ahead, Molly.
All right, so that was something that the mayor and Tracy and I worked with D C E D for, so. Um, in addition to uh the seventy percent funding for paytime and the SNA. They also uh incorporated the first due seventy per- seventy uh percent of the uh implementation costs in the first year cost. For first year.
So it's only for the first year then that this is, this is. Going to be working for, okay? So we're at the, so for an annual fee, we'll be paying eleven thousand seven hundred dollars. Um, Chief, where's that gonna come out of your your budget? Do you, do you have that?
Yeah, that comes out of contract services.
Contract services and um. You have here, keeping specific to fire department at a cost of eight hundred dollars for implementation fees. And the eleven thousand dollars and seven hundred, eleven thousand seven hundred dollars. So there's really two different fees here.
Yeah, so the eight hundred dollars is the the cost of the scheduling. Module of first do. And then the eleven thousand seven hundred is everything else that that's included in it.
Okay, now, the this, these dollar amounts, is this taking into consideration the D C E D funding? Is this what is gonna be the cost for after the first year?
Yes.
Sorry, Chief.
Go ahead, Molly.
That's, that's one hundred percent of the cost and D C E D would cover seventy percent of that.
Okay, for just the first year, but the eleven thousand seven hundred dollars and the eight hundred dollars is what it'll cost the fire department. In the second year.
Um, no, it would be eleven thousand seven hundred because the implementation co- uh cost would already be covered in the first year.
Okay, okay, that's what I was trying to understand. Okay, so eleven thousand seven hundred dollars is what they'll be paying after year one.
Yes.
Fantastic, um. It's a great, it's a great program. It's it's what it's bringing you up to. Uh, where you should be. And like you said, this is probably gonna be a mandate, not in the near future. So, um.
Right. Uh. So, i- i- if I may inter- uh interrupt you there. Um, one, one of the big things with this software is that the state is going to that, so. Uh. The enfers of the fire, um, the fire. Um. Reporting system portion. There's, there's a number of different um modules, so the fire reporting portion of it will be covered by the state. Um. And then that will be um. That that is how we reduced from, I think it was twelve thousand something, down to the eleven thousand seven hundred. Um, the the current software that we're using is about four thousand dollars. But it was purchased by a new company, um, ESO and everything that I've. Uh, I'm sorry, everyone that I've talked to said that uh their quotes that they've received from ESO. Have been in the twenty thousand dollar range. So this is, uh, you know, almost half of that.
Fantastic. I don't have any more questions. I'll, I'll defer to my uh cohort there in crime, Vince. If Vince has any questions.
I don't. No, you've covered everything, so, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Uh, the only comment that I'll make is, um, you know, within the past two weeks, we're we're adding roughly a hundred fifty thousand dollars in software costs. To our budget um to handle all this stuff, so I just, I understand D C E D is graciously picking up seventy percent of that. Uh, for next year, and I think that's a good program for them to be doing, so that way we can get on board with it. Uh, and the the initial blow isn't so bad uh to our budget, um, but i- it's gonna require a lot of um. Lot of thinking as to where this is gonna come out of next year and how we're gonna fund it to go forward.
Here, here. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank on the uh motion, please.
Mr. Pulzy.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Item nineteen, except for filing, we have the finance committee meeting minutes. From October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions for the minutes? Hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Pulzy.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes four to zero. Item twenty announcements, um, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, January seventh. Of two thousand twenty-three, seven P M. Trade and Transit Two. Um, there's nothing listed on the agenda for upcoming meetings, um, so we do a reorganization meeting every year. Um, we'll do this one at our first meeting in January. Um, I I think that we can do. Committee meetings, uh, I think Janice, we can probably schedule those, at least for the first round of council meetings. Um, for 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 next year, um, cause I I know we're gonna have a number of things on the agenda. Um, so we'll wanna use the committees to try to just flush out some details. Um, but, um, you know. We can, we can work with committee chairs over the break um to to see if if there's any date changes and that kind of stuff, at least for the first ones.
Um, okay. I'll advertise the same dates then, right? Okay.
Yeah, a- and that's fine, at least for the first one, um, and then we can get through the first meeting and then, um, you know, so if anything changes, we can go from there, but that sounds good. Um, so there's nothing listed for upcoming meetings, but there will be some, so, and they'll be advertised. Um, item twenty-one, any comments? Um, I'll just, you know, kind of echo my sentiments la- last week. Um, we're remote, we're not in person, but, uh, just thanks, everybody, for your work this year. Uh, there's four of us here tonight, um, a couple, a couple people couldn't make it, um, one had to leave early, that's okay. Um, just thankful to be serving with all of you and, uh, appreciate your work this year and I'm looking forward to working with you next year, um, and I'm looking forward to work with the administration as well next year. Um, been a pretty crazy few years, but, uh, we got some good things going and I'm looking forward to seeing them through. So thank you all.
Thank you as well.
I I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. See you next year.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other comments from members of council?
Nothing that everybody hasn't already said, so. Crazy is an understatement.
Yeah, yeah. Um, any comments from?
If I could.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Vince.
With as crazy as things do get, I I'm extremely proud to say that I sit on council with each and every single one of you, regardless of whether we agree all the time or not. Um, I think every single person here brings a unique perspective to the table. Um, that is definitely a a benefit to the city, so, thank you all.
Here, here. Any comments from members of the administration? Mr. Black?
Uh, yeah, this is just an observation. January seventh is a Saturday.
It's January fifth.
Well, my, I'm sorry, my copy says the seventh, okay.
And no, I just echo the sentiments. Wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays and Happy New Year and hope everyone is safe and healthy. And thank you all for the, and thank you all for the work collaboratively. I I agree with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Slaughter. Any other comments from members of the administration? Janice, did we get any comments from members of the public?
No, we haven't. I've been checking all night.
All right, thank you very much for that, Janice. I appreciate that. And, uh, there's no members of the news media, your media here. Janice, you didn't get any comments or questions from the news media?
Nothing.
All right, take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last meeting in the books, ladies and gentlemen. Everybody have a safe and wonderful holiday and, uh, we'll see you in twenty twenty-three. Thank you all very much.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.